Aaron, are we ready? I heard that I'm recording. Is that... Are we good to go?
John, are you good? I haven't pulled it up yet. You are good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for coming. We will begin our meeting with an invocation by Ryan Bazell, after which his sister Sophia will give... lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Amen. Thank you, Ryan. Sophia? And can I ask you, Sophia? I forgot to do that. There's a button on the center that says "push", and then there's a light green now? Okay.
Perfect. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll be seeing them again in a minute. We start off with unscheduled public appearances. If there is anyone that would like to address the council on an item that is not a public hearing in our agenda, you're welcome to come to the pulpit and share your thoughts for a few minutes, three to be exact. Aaron, is there anyone online that would like to participate?
No one is raising their hand, Mayor. We do have a couple of participants, but we expect to hear from them later in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, the next item is a pleasure for me to do. So I'm going to come down and ask the Bazell family to come forward. And Aaron, can you put up the... We'll face front because then the council can see you. That's who we really care about at the moment. So Ryan, just for the sake of the pulpit, he then, as an eighth grader, went to an English class, and the teacher asked him, "What would you rather be, a marigold or what was the other thing?" A walnut tree. It was a really interesting read, and there are people about it. And walnut trees, there's nothing that grows around them because when the nights fall, there's some oil in the nut that it hits well. But marigolds get planted in gardens, and they protect the garden from insects, and they make it look better. So we have happy flowers, happy garden, and no bites. And so he was asked, "What would you rather be, a walnut tree or a marigold?" He decided to be a marigold, and that started him off on a series of projects to do kind acts for everybody that ended up later that year on Valentine's Day, instead of him ordering a thousand flowers and giving a carnation to every student at his junior high. And there's 947. And then he continued that tradition on the high school. He's now a senior. He's done it for five years. And this year, how many flowers? 1,300. Now, Ryan pays for the flowers himself. He earns the money. He does the work. He organizes it. It's like an equal project every year. And when I heard about it from Mayor Frost, because he goes... he attends American Park High School, and Mayor Frost shared with me something about him. He said, "Did you know that one of your residents does this?" And so I read about it, and I got really excited because what the world needs today is more kind acts and less selfish thinking. And what a great example for everybody. So he gives certificates for him honoring him. He's a Highland hero. So Ryan, you're an official Highland hero now, and you get a Highland hero pin. We do a special pin. We get 50 of them every year based on our theme for our city celebration, "Couple Fling". And this year's theme, or last summer's theme, was "Our Story unfolds". So you are forever a part of Highland's story because of your kind acts. She's all in life, and we expect to see good things from you as you make the world a better place. And his parents can't get credit for everything, but they do get credit for some.
I've got credit for a lot.
So you also get Highland hero pins because you helped raise such a wonderful son. So thank you to Ryan and his family and for all of them helping because I think I would imagine he set it up when your family called it, the son of Stetson. So you should all get Highland hero pins and certificates. But this is part of us, so you can enjoy it as well. So thank you. I think you deserve a prize. I wanted to do this last council meeting, but they all went and got COVID. And so we had to put it off for two weeks. So they're actually really safe to be around. You can stay and enjoy the rest of the council meeting. I will celebrate last year. Ice cream conference. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one of our online participants did raise their hand. Would you like to allow them to speak as part of unscheduled public appearances?
Sure.
Mr. Kilger, I'm going to unmute you.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate this. I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand before that opportunity went away. I wanted to just... Just strange because I say it, then I hear it. On page 94 of the minutes for this meeting, there is some discussion of orphan space purchase. And I live in Viewpoint, and there's a number of us up here who are very interested in that. And there's... The price was set at $274. And this, I understand, is not firm yet. And it's better than the last price that it was published. Of course, we'd like it to be lower. But also on there, there are some conditions. And in reference to Exhibit A, which apparently Exhibit A, it says, is a list of properties the town has reviewed and agreed to meet the criteria to be sold.
Yes.
But that's not available, I guess, for public. So as soon as that's available, I'd like to see it. Also, there's a condition on the list of conditions that says, you know, we can't sell the property if it's going to create more orphan space. And I didn't really understand what that... how that happens.
That would happen if you sold properties that weren't contiguous, and then you created another parcel that was inaccessible by the city. Some of that would get answered in our discussion. Tonight's discussion on this item is strictly about policy, not necessarily about properties. One of the policies that we talked about was reviewing orphan parcels that are available and determining on an annual basis or some periodic basis what that list is. So tonight, the discussion is not about which specific properties we identified for this year, but about the policy so that we can craft a policy that will be long-lasting. And our attorney will go over that with us at the end of the meeting, which I hope will be between 9:00 and 9:30. That's my guess, but staff is live at night because it's possible to be later. Anything else you want to share?
9:30, so...
Okay. Well, we'll try and counsel so you have guidance now to try and accommodate a resident. Thank you, and I'll pay you your five bucks for saying that later.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else, Aaron? Okay.
No, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from a member of youth council. And I assume that's you, young lady. So if you'll come up, state your name and let us know what youth council is doing.
Okay. So my name's Camilla Bradshaw, and I am the government chair position. So for our last activity in February, we made Valentine's cards for the old folks home, and that was coordinated by our service chair. We had a really great turnout, and it was really good to get to know everyone more and to meet all the youth. So that was really fun. And so for our next activity, we're doing the Easter egg extravaganza that will take place on March 27th. People will be able to sign up ahead of time online, and the registration opens this Thursday for like a time slot. And they'll drive through the city hall parking lot, pick up a kit to do their own egg hunt at home. And it will include filled eggs, candy, art kits provided by the arts council, and other prizes. Chick-fil-A, Little Caesar's, and Texas Roadhouse have donated coupons and gift certificates. And then the youth council will help by filling the bags before the event, making sure the Easter bunny is there to wave to the crowd and help pass out the kids that morning. So I think that'll be a really great activity, and yeah.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, and thanks for all you do. You guys do a lot of fun services, and we really, really appreciate it.
Oh, I just have a question. So people, just to let the public know, if they want to come and get the Easter baskets, how do they go about registering, and when do they need to do that?
So I was actually not at the last meeting, so I'm not super informed. But I assume that...
I think it's March 4th. I read on Facebook.
So a link will be released on March 4th via social media and the website, and they can sign up until it's full at that point.
Okay.
So stand by on March 1st and be ready to click, right?
Correct.
Is that midnight? It'll...
Ooh, good question. I'm sure it'll be in that morning. We'll release it on social media.
All right. Okay. All right. Next item is consent items. There's one. It's approval of our regular city council meeting minutes for February 2nd and February 16th. Counsel, is there any... Does anybody want to talk about that? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the consent items, which is just the approval of the February 2nd and 16 meetings.
I'll second it.
Motion by Brittany, second by Scott. We are ready to vote. Oh, you're tempting me. For those of you that can't see, when we do electronic voting, the council members' names show up, and occasionally, they're abbreviated. And it tempts me to mock people than I shouldn't. So I will resist. All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item is a public hearing/ ordinance text amendment, storage facilities in the professional office zone. We'll have staff... I assume that's you, Kelly, give a report. Then if there's someone from the... from Patterson, from Highland Storage Tier, we'll have them speak, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Mayor, before we begin this item, I need to recuse myself on this. I have been in negotiations the last year with Patterson Construction on the easement issue, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt. All right.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Like the mayor said, this is a request for a development code amendment in the professional office zone. By the applicant is Isaac Patterson. A little bit of background. The professional office zone was adopted in 2003, and the purpose of the zone as a whole was to accommodate the storage facility, which is Highland Hideaway Storage, as well as a number of office buildings close by. And the applicant, his property does include Highland Hideaway Storage as well as the Highland Business Park, which is those office buildings. This is the affected lot. It's just one lot. That's Highland Hideaway Storage, just over by Highland Boulevard. And this text amendment is allowing for the leasing of moving vehicles as a part of storage facilities in the PO zone. Again, this would just apply to Highland Hideaway Storage. The way that this amendment is organized, well, the PO zone and the development code has a section of the conditional uses. And in the conditional uses, a storage facility is one of those conditional uses. And then at the end of the PO zone, there's another section dedicated entirely to storage facilities and explaining what is allowed in storage facilities. And so that's the section, that's the piece that we would be amending in this text amendment. And in that amendment, a little bit of detail is that it is allowing two moving vehicles to be visible or like displayed outside. And then six may be stored inside, screened from outside view.
So the ones outside would be in the parking lot in front of the building?
Yes. And at the planning commission meeting, Isaac did clarify that the reason for two of them being visible is just for easy pickup and drop-off. And he did mention when they're not being used or they don't have any... anyone expecting to come, that they would have them hidden away with the other six vehicles or whatever number they have. These are just some examples of what they look like if people didn't know. And the planning commission did hear this request and hold a public hearing on February 23rd last week. And there was no resident participation or comments. And the commission did recommend approval to the council of this text amendment. We, as staff, recognize that this text amendment would... is... the change is limited to no impact, honestly. And the wording, it does say... So the six vehicles being hidden from view, the wording says that they have to be under a structure with a roof, with no side walls, were screened from outside view. And this is just the wording that we use in that same section for boats and trailers. So that's where he got that from. And we did send out the public... or the appropriate noticing for the public hearing for here as well as Planning Commission, as well as the notices we needed for Planning Commission City Council as a public meeting. And we, as staff, recommend that the city council conduct that public hearing and discuss the issues and approve the proposed amendment. And we do have Isaac Patterson over Zoom if you have any questions for him specifically.
We'll take the questions later. Does Isaac want to say anything in advance of questions?
Isaac, I'm going to unmute you.
The only thing I would say besides Patterson, the only thing that I would say is because I break down questions.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but hopefully it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. I'm using my gavel. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue? Is there anyone online that would like to talk about this?
So if you're online and you would like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Or on Zoom, excuse me. I do not see anything on YouTube, Mayor, and no one is raising their hand on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, questions for Isaac or Kelly?
I have a question. So as I've read this, and you know, I've been over by the storage facility and things, I don't understand when we have six of the vehicles basically covered by a roof, but the sides are open and everything, why we need two vehicles out in the parking lot? I don't quite understand that, and I'm not sure why the citizens of Highland need to see those moving vehicles out there.
Isaac, do you want to address that?
Yes. So they're not meant to be out there full time. They're meant to be dropped off and delivered. So many times, people will want to use the moving truck and tell it to separate the body ice, and then they'll drop it off and leave it overnight. And this will allow them to do that.
And then I presume in the morning, if there was something being rented that day, you would bring it out and park it there so that it would be easy to pick up? Is that it?
Correct. Correct, Mayor.
So is the storage where the six are being stored, is that in a back part of the unit or something? It's not easily accessible? I guess I'm still not convinced where we need to have these trucks out where everybody can see them all the time.
Yes. The six we store on the east side is actually been marked as a spot for construction equipment, et cetera, to be stored as part of the last phase that my partner has done. So it'll just be on the east side of the storage facility, a little bit behind the workstation units. And just for ease of use, it is very helpful to be able to put a truck out front. Again, we'll actually have two dedicated stalls on the east side of the road that's currently there. And they'll be able to clear the mark that they're for overnight parking and, you know, for pickup that day. So that's the extent of what we need to do, two units out front.
So if they drop it off at night, would you in the morning then put it... take it back?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions for Isaac or Kelly? All right. Is anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to allow the leasing of moving vehicles and storage facilities. And the PO zone, based on the following findings, it is consistent with the purpose and intent of the PO zone. It is consistent with the general plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Kim, second by Brittany. We're ready to vote. Kurt, are you able to vote? Oh, you're not voting, so yes. Sorry. Okay. Two noes, two yeses. The mayor votes yes. It passes 3-2. All right. Next item. Neighborhood hearing, ordinance, general plan amendment, neighborhood option trails. Is that you, Kelly, again?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Like the mayor said, this is a general plan amendment, and it is to reclassify neighborhood option trails to neighborhood trails. This is a request from the city council. Aaron, is that working? Sorry. Okay. I usually say a little bit of background, but this is a lot of bit of background, so just bear with me. The general plan... The entirety of the general plan was adopted in 2008, and part of the general plan is the Trails Master Plan. And a Trails Master Plan includes the existing trails as well as trails that the city hopes to put in the future. And there are specific classifications for like these types of trails. And in 2013, the council updated the Trails Master Plan and added a classification called neighborhood option trails. These were originally neighborhood trails switched to neighborhood option trails to give the option for subdivisions or residents to petition to remove these trails without actually going through a general plan amendment to amend the Trailmaster Plan. And so this just saved time, made it a lot easier not having to do a public hearing, that kind of thing. Over since this update or just in the past with trails, there's been a lot of complaints and confusion with the maintenance of these trails over the last year or two. The council and staff have worked really hard to address these maintenance concerns. In January 2020, there was... Council placed a one-year moratorium on the removal of neighborhood option trails. The NLT is neighborhood option trail. It's not just capitals "not". But the purpose of this was to give them at least a year to be able to discuss and decide or just come up with a plan to remove these neighborhood option trails. In the fiscal year 2019 and 2020, $133,000 were spent on crack seal and seal coat for these trails. And in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, the city has budgeted $135,000 for trail maintenance. And we're currently going through the process of organizing where this budget will be spent. In October 2020, the council directed the staff to begin the process to eliminate the option of removing neighborhood option trails. And in November 2020, this was further discussed, and the council amended the municipal code to eliminate the option, like the neighborhood option trail section. There was a whole section dedicated to what these were and the process to eliminate them. And in that meeting, they discussed the need to amend the Trailmaster Plan as well. And February 2021, just last month, a draft of the Trail Maintenance Plan was presented to the council. Again, this amendment is just to reclassify neighborhood option trails to neighborhood trails. Nathan had me specify. This is just changing the yellows to brown.
And because there's not an option to... or not a process to eliminate them, eliminate those trails outside of the council making that decision, they're not different than any other trails. So this...
Right. It's classifying them as neighborhood trails as in, in order to remove them, you would have to go through an actual general plan amendment to amend the Trails Master Plan to remove a trail, making it a very public process and making us have to... our council have to do a more extensive review in order to remove that. And the fact that in order to... We just suggest that in order to... My goodness. Where are my words? For updating the Trailmaster Plan... For updating the Trail Master Plan, it should be done while updating the whole general plan. That way, we're better able to set our goals and policies to fall in line with our goals for the Trail Master Plan. This is our, oh, it's this one. This is our current general plan, or Trails Master Plan, I apologize. Circled are, those are the yellow ones, the neighborhood option trails. And then this is the updated one. Look at all those new streets. So the previous one was updated in 2013, and this is our proposed 2021 updated one, and that neighborhood option trail classification is removed, and they are now neighborhood trails.
So Kelly, can I ask, can you go back to that drawing, please? If there was a trail that was removed during that process, has it been removed off the map?
We have not updated it that way.
Like the Pfeifferhorn Trail at the very top circled, I don't believe that that's, that's no longer in our trail plan. I'm just.
Yes, so that was the point where if we were to update and take off trails or add trails, that would be as part of the comprehensive review of the Trails Master Plan, which we would do when we basically just have the funds to update the general plan.
I think Kurt's question was, we've already removed that trail.
Right. So.
So that, the map is out of date based on what's happened, right?
So that trail is no longer, that's already been disposed of at the very top, the Pfeifferhorn Trail. Am I thinking correct, Scott, that that trail's gone?
Well, okay, so it was a dual trail with part of the trail in Highland. That part was surplus because there's a trail that parallels it in Alpine. And originally, when this was surplus, the city gave Alpine $17,000 to fix up the other trail. I think they refunded it, and they've never done anything with their trail. So the big argument back then is why do we need a dual trail? One in Highland, one in Alpine, and they were parallel, just a few feet apart, basically.
And that was, that was, I don't know how that happened.
You on the council.
That was on the council, and I supported getting rid of that because it was redundant, right?
Totally redundant.
And the neighbors wanted to buy the property, and that was, so I viewed that as a win-win. So I guess, Nathan, would it be appropriate if when we, if this passes and this, and we end up updating this map as a result, could we also take care of any housekeeping things that weren't?
Yeah, just part of the motion, the ones that have already been abandoned.
Is that the only one we noticed on that map that has been surplus or abandoned?
Well, there's the Wimbledon that's kind of up in the air.
Yeah, and Wimbledon is TBD.
There's a little piece in Highland Hills. Other than that, I mean, there was one also in Canterbury, there's the little sliver.
So then we get into the other question. Since we're asking some questions.
Sorry, we should let her finish her presentation, then we can.
Okay, I don't, I don't have much more, I promise.
Okay, because I've got a bunch of questions.
When it was presented to the planning commission, they held their public hearing, and there was no resident comment, and they did recommend approval of the general plan amendment. And just to reiterate that the amendment just requires a more extensive review in order to remove any trail. But currently, just what we're changing is the classified neighborhood option trails.
And that's because in part, there's no process, the code that we have now, because we changed it in November.
Currently, there's a hole in our code, essentially.
So this is making the code consistent.
Kelly, is the reason there's a hole, hole in our code is back in November, we removed that out of our code, the neighborhood option trail disposal process.
Yes, so it really doesn't exist in our code. Our Trails Master Plan just has it as a classification, and there's really nothing we do with them, which is why we're reclassifying it, is just to match what is in our code. And we as staff do recommend that the city council hold a public hearing and approve the proposed general plan amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so maybe before counsel questions, let's just open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the meeting that would like to speak to this issue?
If you're online Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak to this. I'm not seeing anybody on YouTube, and nobody is raising their hand, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to do two quick taps of the mallet. Public hearing open, public hearing closed. All right, Scott?
Okay, well, these are some of my questions, because on this map, which we're going to update, and my first question was about the Pfeifferhorn Trail. But does this map, I mean, some of these neighborhood option trails that were classified as such, many of them were paved. But there are some, like on this map, that are unpaved, like the perimeter around Viewpoint. And, and there were other, like in Canterbury Circle, there was a potential trail that was surplus, but it was never developed. So how do we delineate between paved, unpaved, proposed, unproposed, possible trails? I mean, I see all the little red lines and different things, but we've got proposed trails that go through other cities. I guess I'm a little confused at, the big contention with the neighborhood option trails is when we tried to surplus one in North Canterbury and the Wimbledon that were paved, but it didn't seem like there was any problem with the unpaved ones. And on Viewpoint, we've had discussions about that perimeter trail as a council even recently. So I guess I'm a little confused at the classification, because we have some trails that are just dirt, some that are nothing, some are proposed. How does that all fit together? Does that make sense?
Scott, the one in Canterbury Circle is actually the one in the park. It's not the perimeter.
Oh, yeah, I know that, but we did surplus in the past, and it was on, when the mayor was on the council, that area around Canterbury, which was supposed to have been a trail.
So that's not, so that's not on this map, so.
Right.
So that's gone.
But how about the ones around Viewpoint? Because there's, around the edge of Viewpoint, there is not a trail, mostly that, yet we're talking about maybe surplusing this orphaned.
If I remember correctly, I mean, pull up, you can pull up the aerial.
Can you make that map bigger? Can, around Viewpoint?
I can, I can, but I have to go to the website to pull up an old map, so is that, if that's okay with you.
That, that works.
Councilwoman Bill, or Councilwoman Bill lives there. Doesn't this map look like the preferred, even built? Trail is there?
Yeah, it does look like there's one that goes behind those homes on the, on the hill.
On the south side?
On the side, but yes, the south side.
Yeah, and there is not one there.
And there's not one there. And then I think, isn't the one on the north side, haven't we already surplus part of that? Or is that further down?
There were three.
There were three.
Three areas, or five, three homes that we surplus.
Yeah, and there was no trailer there.
There wasn't, again, it was a potential trail.
Yeah, it was a potential trail around that perimeter.
Where it says park.
So part of, part of that brown is not, really should be dashed, it's incorrect, so we could ask staff to fix things that they see are wrong.
Yeah, it's just a little confusing.
I agree. So if, as part of amending this, counsel, when you make a motion, if you could ask staff to correct, correct the things that are incorrect there, that would be great.
So I'd like just to make a couple other comments and then let other people talk. I apologize. But I was on the council when we designated neighborhood option trails. The purpose for that, we spent, I don't know, dozens, perhaps hundreds of hours, meeting with some of the open space residents who were very upset that these trails weren't being maintained. And that's because, one, we were in the recession, and two, we didn't have a lot of extra revenue, which we seem to have more of now, so I understand it. But on the history, we actually surplus some real kind of contentious areas. And, and it's interesting, because some of the neighborhoods that did make quite a bit of noise, like Highland Hills, when the time came, they decided to keep their trails, but they just wanted to have some of the property up to the trail, leaving, what, a five or eight-foot perimeter? So that's what happened in Highland Hills. We know the story behind Wimbledon, which is kind of an ongoing story. In Windsor Park, they didn't want to option any of their trails, but they did, on the north side, want to basically have the city surplus property up to the trail again. So most of the trails, there hasn't been a big movement among most of the neighborhoods to really surplus their trails, but a lot of the people have wanted property close to the trail that's been kind of an unkept space, you know? And if you look at North Canterbury, or not North Canterbury, but Windsor Park, some of those homes have, I don't know, half acre between them and the trail that's only maintained by mowing. So that's kind of, the reason we came up with the neighborhood option trail thing is to let the neighbors, if they went through this rigorous process, that they could have the petition to have that area surplus. So my opinion is, I support this new change, but I think people need to understand the purpose in the past, and some of that's been met. So now that we have more funds to maintain the trails, that was always my contention. I don't live in an open space neighborhood. It wasn't, you know, I didn't have a dog in that fight. But I always felt like if we can't maintain things well and keep them safe, and so they're not an eyesore for people that live there, that we need to find some other options. And so the option was, is that if they went through this rigorous process, like Wimbledon has done two or three times, that they could surplus the trail. So I love trails. I'm on the trails a lot, and I'd like us to be able to have lots of trails, but we also have to have the resources to maintain them appropriately. So I've said what I wanted to say.
Councilman Smith, I have a question for you. Do you think then that this new process is going to be less rigorous than the old process was?
I think when you have to change, and our attorney can tell us better, but I think when you have to amend the plat, I think in some ways it'll be more rigorous. I don't know. We'll have to see. He can probably tell us.
This is Rob Patterson. Yes, it would be a more rigorous process, because the city had a code section that provided a petition process where neighborhoods could gather signatures, come to the council. While it wasn't necessarily an automatic approval, there was kind of an expectation of, if this was presented to the council, the council would review it and, and look at that, and it's kind of a thought of, well, this was kind of designated as a potential sale, so it was kind of weighted in favor of that. This says, you can still remove trails, of course. The city can always remove any property that it owns, but you do have to go through the full, either a plat amendment, if it's a full right of way, you have to amend the trails plan, which would require, like we're doing now, a full public hearing and notice to everyone. So anyone who's interested would come in and address that, and that was not part of the previous process.
So are you saying that if, for example, and let's just do an example there on that periphery round Viewpoint, where there isn't a trail, but there's some interest on the city level of surplusing that and the neighbors, but they're going to have to go before the planning commission, have public hearings, and so every piece of property that we surplus is going to have to go through public hearings, and the planning commission, and all these other things. Is that what the scoop is?
Yes, and to clarify, I mean, the city can, as happens sometimes, you know, the mayor or staff or council members will go out and talk to people and come back and report, say, hey, there's interest in doing this, let's bring this up to the council, are you interested in doing this? And then you just work out the process, say, all right, I think the city's interested on this, the residents seem to be interested on this, let's start the process. It would require, you know, a planning commission hearing, city council hearing, but it's more of a city managed process, if that makes sense. Rather than, you know, neighborhoods, residents coming to the city and saying, can you grant this petition? It's more the city and neighborhoods working together, and the city's saying, you know, we're interested in maybe doing this, let's start this process, and the city kind of manages it going forward, if that slight shift makes sense.
There's one clarification. If you recall, the council made a decision not to remove any of the paved trails. So if there's land up to that paved trail with that corridor, then they wouldn't go through this process. If somebody wanted to get rid of the paved trail, then that's the process that Rob's referring to.
And we have, as a later agenda item today, a discussion of surplusing property that's not paved and the orphan parcels, which is a separate discussion. That kind of process won't involve a whole public hearing process.
Well, that was my question, because I just wondered if every time we had a open piece of property, we have to go through a general plan amendment now.
No, only if it's a full trail that's been marked on the map, then we have to go and amend it, you know, a paved trail.
But that's why we need to clarify the map, because we have trails marked that are not paved.
Correct, and I think your point was very well taken, that, you know, as part of, if this gets approved, ask staff to clarify, you know, remove that one that's already been removed, make sure it's clear where it's a proposed versus an already paved one.
Okay, that's very helpful. I appreciate it.
Well, in, in the other, in the other part of this is with the council declaring the property that we're to dispose of, that actually takes a step out, so it's actually easier to dispose of property.
I was just going to say, I like this process better, because as Rob said, it's a city managed process instead of a neighborhood managed process. And, you know, any process that takes away that, well, we saw what happened in Wimbledon, just, you know, takes away the feelings out of that neighborhood of one neighbor against another, and instead of kind of makes the city the bad guy or the good guy, is, is something that I'd rather aim for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a follow-up comment on what Kim said, and that is, I completely agree. In my particular neighborhood, we experience some pretty ugly repercussions relating to the signature gathering process. And I'll give you an example. When my neighbors, of course, knew that my, what my position was, I had people that refused to talk to me after that point, wouldn't even look me in the eye or greet me, not to make a social comment, but not even at church. And they even withdrew from organizations such as the choir, because I was part of the choir. And so I just think, what Kim said is spot on, that it really pits neighbor against neighbor. And if a neighbor comes to your house and asks you to sign something, you feel pressured to do so, because they're your neighbor, even though you may not agree with it. And so then there's resentment, and there's bad feelings, and, and these bad feelings continue to today between some of the neighbors. So I think we just bring it back into the, a process that eliminates the signature gathering procedure, put it back into the city council, and if people want to be upset with me, that's great, but don't bring my neighbors into it.
We signed up for this, right?
We certainly did, and you're going to upset half the people anyway, no matter what your decision is, so.
So can I just make sure, just to clarify the process, and maybe Nathan or Kelly, you guys, if, let's assume that a resident approaches one of the council members, saying, hey, I happen to have some space behind my home that used to have a trail, but it's never been put in, would the city be interested in disposing it? So the resident still can come approach council, the council then, and mayor maybe helping with the process, if that council member feels that that's a, that they would like to kind of champion, they maybe could get another council person or talk to the mayor or anything, and then that could become on the agenda as an item for the city council to discuss. Is that the?
That's, well, that's, that's part of the discussion.
Okay.
Later, number nine later, so.
Because this is neighborhood option trails, not all orphan properties, right?
This is just changing yellow to brown.
And if we want to move to not have it be brown, then we could change the color.
We could ask them to change it to another color, green, whatever.
So I'd like to make one more comment, though. On this master trail plan, we probably ought to really look at that carefully, because we have a lot of, you know, interrupted red lines and different things for potential trails, which I think are great, but in our trail plan, and this is a question for Todd, do, do we have any proposal to develop more trails? I thought most of the trail plan that was presented was for maintenance. Because on that master trail plan, there's, you know, miles of extra trails, and I just wondered what the plan was to do with that.
And maybe Nathan can add to this, but yeah, the, the trail maintenance plan that we're planning is only connecting a few of the trails that have not been completely finished, mostly in the northwest area. But there are places that you can see on this trail map that currently we have not connected, because development has just not happened. There's still undeveloped properties where we anticipate trails to connect through, so.
One example would be Mitchell Hollow.
Correct.
In the next couple of years. In the next couple of years, we'll have a trail down to Canal Boulevard. And south of that, to 9600, we have easements.
Right.
Where when we have funding, we could build a trail. Now that happens to be a trail that is a county, on the county master plan, and we can get MAG money to finish it.
So, I mean, that's my question. Where does the money come from?
On some of these, it's MAG money.
Yeah, a lot of the small little pieces, we're gonna try to take care of with our trail maintenance money. The larger sections, like the mayor is saying, is either going to be development or applied funding through MAG, so.
Okay, great.
Any other comments, questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed general plan amendment to reclassify neighborhood option trails to neighborhood trails in the master plan. And that it is consistent with the goals and policies found in the parking recreation facilities and trail section of the general plan, and instruct the city staff to update the trail master map, trail master map.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Kurt, second by Tim. Ready for a vote, Aaron?
Kurt, you forgot the part where they're gonna change the color from orange. Pink?
We want to amend it to brown now.
I don't like brown.
Tim, are you okay to vote? You haven't voted yet on the screen.
Oh, I push vote.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item. Item eight, ordinance changing, wait, no. Item seven, resolution country French subdivision no build policy amendment. Kelly, that's you. And then just, I've invited the masters, after you're done, to address the council if they had any comments to make. And I believe Mrs. Masters is going to do that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So the country French subdivision, the final plat was approved back in 2005. Part of this plat was an 80-foot no build easement. This is applicable to lots 1 through 11 on plat A and lots 42 through 52 on plat B. The purpose of this was to provide a type of density buffer between the Bull River subdivision and the country French subdivision. And at this time, the council defined the no build easement as just not giving any building permits within these 80 feet. In 2017, a resident of the country French subdivision requested to remove this 80-foot no build easement. And the council denied that request. There's a lot of history about this, but basically there were three main parties in this whole situation. And that was the city, the Bull River HOA, and the Bowman's, who are property owners in the country French subdivisions, are the ones that requested to remove that easement. And as an agreement between these three parties, the city did two things. One of them applied to the subdivision as a whole. Well, these lots that have the 80-foot no build zone. And then the other thing that they did applied to just the Bowman's lot. So the thing that applied to the whole subdivision was a resolution, and that was to define what the 80-foot no build zone or easement means. And they defined that as no vertical structures in the 80-foot setback. The resolution did include that fence permits are permitted. But then everything that is ground level or below grade structures can receive a building permit as long as they're setback at least 50 feet from the rear lot line. And the second thing, the thing that just applies to the Bowman's lot, was a development agreement. These three parties signed this development agreement. And this allowed the Bowman's to have their pool 30 feet from the rear lot line, as well as receive a building permit for their 14-foot retaining wall along the, their rear lot line. As part of this agreement, the Bowman's were also required to add some landscaping, some specific trees that were specified in the development agreement, which is also, it's part of the staff report. They needed to build this on their lot, as well as the lot adjacent to them. And the purpose of that was just to visually mitigate the impact between them and the Bull River subdivision. So the masters, they live right next to the Bowman's. And they would like to build a pool in their backyard. And they, staff gave them, or showed them the history of everything that's happened, why they can build up to 50 feet from the rear. And we also showed them the development agreement that the Bowman's had because they're only 30 feet from their rear lot line. And they requested to also have a development agreement similar to that of the Bowman's. After discussion, staff with the support of the city attorney came to the conclusion that that, that a development agreement was not the best way to go about this. And it wasn't a very viable option. And the most viable option was to modify that resolution that was written in 2017. And just to amend the way that the no build easement was defined. And so it would be amending that 50-foot setback to be 42 or 40 or whatever it is that council decides. The, these are the plans for the masters pool. It is a 16 by 36-foot pool that's along the water line. This is it, what it looks like on their lot. Oh, I do want to point out too, so the, the southern line of the pool, that is measured from, to be about 42 feet from that lot line, which is what they were requesting.
Now, just as you have this up here, the neighbor Bowman's, you said that they were able to go within 30 feet?
Yes, that is correct.
I thought it was a 50-foot.
So it is, it is 50 feet overall for the subdivision. But the Bowman's are the ones that have that development agreement. They were permitted to have it up to 30 feet contingent upon following these rules in the development agreement, which is, again, an exhibit in the staff report.
So Kelly, while you're on that photo, and we see Bowman's, what is that behind the pool in the 30-foot easement?
Is a pergola.
And that's above ground?
It is.
Was that part of the development agreement?
No, it's not.
No, well, it's not. Hey, that they have to.
Yes, they're not.
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, they did not receive a building permit for this.
So that's, that's not approved, built, building permitted pergola?
Do we, do we require permits for pergolas?
If they are over 200 square feet. And it looks like it's a little over 200 square feet, which I.
Well, it's not supposed to be above ground either.
We don't know.
According to the development.
Right, the only thing we can regulate is anything over 200 square feet.
So if I wouldn't normally require a permit, it's not covered by the development agreement?
Well, I know, but I thought the agreement was, when you were talking about the no build, because I attended a lot of those meetings and you voted. I, I think, if I remember correctly, you voted to keep the 50-foot no build. And you could build in the 30-foot above that if it was underground, in all the minutes here. So I'm just surprised there's a, above the ground structure there.
There are fences are permitted, right, and sure above ground. And then we did, and I'm remembering, this was a real painful.
Yes, it was.
It was, it was not pleasant. It was painful. I have PTSD over that and several other things. But in the process of the discussion, we did talk about things that did not require a building permit would still be allowed. So if a structure didn't require a building permit, you could still do it. And for example, if you had a sports court, you could put stanchions for basketball, for example, or lights. Because I know we went through some of that. So the, the, there are still some things that are permitted that are above ground, like fences, and then things that would not normally require a permit, which any of the neighbors could do. You can see some of these have a trampoline. It's below ground. Those don't require permits.
Right.
But it's, it's, you know, within that.
But there was a lot of discussion about what was above ground and below ground. And then a lot of discussion, because I attended a lot of those meetings. I think Kurt was there too, weren't you? And, and so I thought the compromise is that you could build things in there if it wasn't above ground.
It was surfaced.
But you're saying the compromise was that if you didn't need a building permit.
Well, we can't regulate anything that doesn't require a building permit. So it doesn't matter what we would want to do or.
So if someone came in and said, hey, I want to build a pergola and it requires a, a, a building permit, we would say no. If they built it on their own, with or without a permit, we would never know.
Right. But are you saying, before you were saying if it's more than 200 square feet, you need one? Is that what you're saying?
At 200 square feet is when a building permit's required. Sometimes people don't get one if it's 200 square feet or more. It just depends.
Okay.
But at 200, it's required.
Which, which we really wouldn't know as staff unless it was a code enforcement complaint, which I, I personally was not aware of this until going through this, so.
I was just a little surprised after all the discussion.
I know. I thought that too.
Okay.
Anyways, okay, so part of this, we did a little analysis. And just because, like I mentioned, their proposed pool size is 16 by 36 feet. I spoke with Clint, our building inspector, and asked just like an average pool size. And he said average is usually 40 by 20. Oh, you're okay. And then he said the average pool size in Highland is usually like 45 by 20, so a little bit larger. And then I went through all of these lots that have the 80-foot no build zone or easement. It's supposed to say easement, I apologize. And all of the lots that have existing pools, I just measured them on Google Earth. Two of them were 50 by 20, four of them were 45 by 20, and then three of them were 40 by 20. This is what it looks like. This is just a rough drawing that I did of the approximate location of the 80-foot restriction. I went, I also went lot by lot to just, because with, with all of these sizes, there's that standard 20 feet in length. And so if we just imagined if all of them did it horizontally and had a 50-foot setback requirement, if you measure from the lot line and go 50 feet up and then the extra 20, and then I gave it like a five-foot buffer or so. And so you need like 75 feet-ish between the lot line and the home to be able to build a pool with this 50-foot setback. And all, well, technically, all of the lots can fulfill this requirement. And the only ones that were questionable, as in, like, kind of unable to put them in the backyards were lots seven and nine, the masters own lot nine, or lot seven, I apologize. And lot nine is just two doors down. I mean, yeah, and they wouldn't be able to do it in their backyard without changing it. If they moved it to the side, maybe, but that's just the consensus we have come to after the analysis. This is not a public hearing, but we did send out a courtesy notice to residents within 500 feet of the subject property. And we also sent ours, sent out our city council notices for city council, just as a public meeting. Oh, I did it twice, sorry. And we, staff just recommend that the city council hold a public meeting and take public input, discuss the issues, and either approve or deny their request to amend the no build policy. And they're, in order to amend it, a new resolution would need to be adopted. And that, an example was in the staff report. You're welcome to change it if you think it needs to be changed, but sending you all that. And like Mayor said, the masters are here.
So I would invite them now to, to come up and share your thoughts.
Hi, we really appreciate the time that you're taking to consider this.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you state your name first?
My name's Marilyn Masters. We moved here about a year and a half ago. We love living here. And we just want a pool for our children who are swimmers and water polo players and for our grandchildren to learn how to swim. If we could place this pool anywhere else, we would. We want to be good neighbors. And because we want to be good neighbors, we've talked to all of the neighbors around us. We have talked to the Bull River HOA president who supports this. We've talked to the two neighbors right behind us to the south. We do not intend on building any structures or retaining walls. We just want a pool to swim in. And would also like to be good neighbors and good friends when this is over. I think that the other thing that we want to let you know is that we don't think there's a lot of potential pools in the future because at least half of our neighborhood already have pools. And I will say that our next door neighbors' children would like us to build the pool half on their lot and half on our lot, so we know that they have their, we have their approval as well. We also feel like the 50-foot setback, which was part of the resolution, was probably just a compromise. We just need eight feet, eight feet so that we can have a pool for our family. So thank you for listening to us and thank you for considering this.
Okay, so I, let me just inject a, because I lived through this. Over the extended period of time, the, the last revision we made was, was really a trying one. There were heated emotions on all sides. There were attorneys involved on all sides. And it could have easily escalated into multiple lawsuits. And so Jerry Abbott, who was, was, I believe, the Bull River HOA president at the time.
It was a Mr. Card, but Jerry.
It was Mike Card that was the HOA president.
So Jerry was involved in the HOA.
Yes.
And stepped in, and he worked with the Bowman's, the neighbors. Brian Brayfield and I went to an HOA meeting. We, Brian and I each individually went, talked to Mr. Bowman. And I think what ended up, what we ended up with was a, a very good compromise. And it, it mitigated a lot of things. It's not perfect. You generally don't have no build zones. But when the development was put together in the early 2000s, that's what was recorded on the plat by the developer. And so that's what we're, we're living with today. But I, I think I want to congratulate the masters for talking to their neighbors. I want to congratulate the people that have provided input so far. I personally have, have not seen any input that was, would not have supported changing it to 42. I did have an exchange with one couple, and when, when we said we really think it needs to be all or nothing, then they were supportive of all. So that, that's just my input. I, I, we, we are what we are because we went through an imperfect, we took an imperfect situation and made it as best we could at the time.
Mayor, or Nathan, could you share why originally that 80-foot no build was put in place?
All I can go back is based on the record that was available in 04, 2004, 2005. It was, the, the original proposal for country French was a open space subdivision that had increased density. And one of the, one of the concessions that the developer was proposing was this transition between Bull River and this property to, to provide a transition between the larger lots and, and what was proposed at the time. The developer did change the proposal to a regular 0140 subdivision and decided to keep this restriction.
So Nathan, it seems like, and what I understand, is originally, when they came to this compromise with this 80-foot setback, that I thought the developer agreed to plant a lot of trees in there. Originally, there was going to be. a lot of trees in there, originally there was going to be a trail, but the trail was eliminated. Do you know a little more about that history?
Well, the trail was eliminated by the council, you may have been on there.
No, I didn't eliminate.
That wasn't the...
I did not eliminate that trail.
This one, this one was, because if you, there, there's an easement back there for a sewer line, and it was a trail at the time, it was eliminated because of topography.
Right, on the east side, it's very steep and it was not...
Yeah, we couldn't make that built. As far as the trees and all that, I, I don't know what happened to that.
Okay, so there were, with the, with the trail easement in there and had a trail been built, at the time, there were rules around fencing adjacent to trails, which are different today than they were then. And I, in some of the emails that I received, there were comments about people adhering to fencing requirements or not.
So actually, at the time, when Country French was approved, the fencing was four feet, and they said, "Okay, you can go to six because you have animal rights and things like that," and they felt that it was a safety concern, but now we have different fencing requirements.
So in the meetings in 2017, like I said, I've attended a lot of those because I was thinking about running for the council. And, and it seemed like there was a lot of concern that came out of Bull River at that time.
Correct.
About the Bowman residents and that, but you're not feeling any negative things coming out of Bull River? I've tried to call some of the Bull River people, but I... Yes?
If you're, yeah, you have to come up, say your name, because we're recording this, so we have to know.
Marilyn Masters, and yes, we just met with Brad Walton, who is the HOA president of Bull River, with, we met with him as recently as Sunday, and he endorses this and should have sent an email in our behalf. As well as the two neighbors with sightlines behind us to make sure, well, they don't really have sightlines, no one has sightlines, that's the whole point. We have a sloping lot, you will not be able to see the pool from anyone's lot, so that's the point, yes, we have approval.
But I think the neighbor you're talking about, is her backyard neighbor is Mark Fisher, which is directly behind her, and then there's going to be the road, which is the, the little road there, then you have the Nielsen, Monique and Dave Nielsen, which I think we got an email from, and the Santiago's, and I think we got an email from them.
And I spoke with Brad, and he was, he mentioned he was in favor, again, had several emails, exchanges with people, and so I actually had an opportunity to, I talked to several Bull River people, I actually was able to talk with Mark Fisher, which unfortunately, he, he is the one that's right behind the Markers' home, he was unaware until I called him of the situation. And I was, and as I talked with him, at very first, he was, "No, I really don't want to have that setback changed, I am not amenable to doing that, I think there's a request that'd come from the HOA president about maybe having access to be able to get, to be able to access the pool." The longer I spoke with Mark, he came up a solution, and I was a little surprised because this comes into the Bowman situation, he says, "Hey, you've got two neighbors behind you that happen to have a pool, how has that been?" And he actually says, "You know, I really don't hear them," and he actually mentioned that the Bowman's had worked it out, where they'd put in quite a bit of landscaping to kind of block a little bit of the concern there. And, and as that, he does have the concern of, since it was negotiated already down to 50 feet, what, you know, when does it ever stop if we do tonight 42 feet or things? And then he was just mentioning, he says, "Maybe a compromise is if there could be a landscape hedging on the backside of the Markers' property to be able to make sure that there's, you know, he, he wants a view shed, you know, or a view corridor, he's, you know, and when I talk, I actually talked to Dave Nielsen, and, and Dave was mentioning, "Hey, as we come out," that's what we, what really the concern was, is they want to have the view still feel natural and not, "Hey, I'm now looking at someone's pool area," things of that nature, coming from the Bull River. I talked to Brad Walton, also the HOA president, and some of those, just because I'd had some close relationships with them in, in the years past, and so I, you know, and talked with Brad, as an HOA, they have not made any decision as an HOA, Brad is, his, his opinion is only his own personal opinion, it's not the HOA opinion. And he was, Brad was in favor, Dave and Monique Nielsen, who's across the way, is in favor, and the Santiago said, "Mark Fisher, as long as we can mitigate with some landscaping and things of that nature," he seemed to be amenable, but he just wanted to know, "When is this ever going to stop?" They have requests keep coming back in. Fair question. Rob, can I ask you a question? Is the city able to mandate, in this case, landscaping requirements? You know, hedges or, the, the code, the resolution we had before said the fence permit can be used, so we, that's...
And Mark Fisher referred to that, he said, "I thought he'd be complaining about, hey, the bigger fence," because it sounds like they did a pretty big fence back behind there, and then, but he thought that that mitigated some of his concern, and so...
So, Nathan, man...
He was fine with what happened there with the Bowman's. I, I actually thought it was going to go the other way, and he was, he thought that was a good solution.
Rob Patterson, to your question, Mayor, not, the reason we're addressing this as a no-build is because the city received an easement, a property right 80 feet wide along the back edge and kind of all around that subdivision. The, the property right the city received is somewhat vague, all it says on the plats is no-build 80 feet. The reason we've addressed it in this way is because it was undefined, so the city had leeway of saying, "All right, we have this property right, it was granted to us by the property owner, the developer at the time, we can define what that means." To go back and mandate changes, I mean, we could talk with the property owners and see if they're, you know, willing to be, look at that as part of this, because this is a legislative process, so it's, it's kind of a policy-based, how does the council want to handle this? But I could not say that the city could just mandate it, because we're not an HOA, we can't change the rules and say, "You must have X number of trees, X type of fencing." We basically set the broad rules and allow people to work within those rules.
Okay, so, in your opinion, that, that's something we should stay away from then, is mandating very detailed things like...
Correct.
A hedge, what kind of hedge?
That, I'm just stating what the, the property owner in their backyard, they, that property owner also was nervous that they'd spent a lot of money on a wood fence, and they want, they said, "Well, we made sure that was, you know, this is, you know, Mark Fisher said that fence is on my property, and I want to make sure that that doesn't get disturbed." And I said, "Well, if it's on your property, you have your property rights to protect that fence." That was, it was just the property owner voicing what their concern was with this application. And then I did receive one other negative from another person in Bull River, that they felt like that they'd already mitigated this, you know, in 2017, and they did not want to have, it was Ann Hansen, so Ann Hansen had sent me an email earlier today about that she felt like this was already resolved in 2017.
Okay, anything else, Rob, do you want to inject while you're there?
Yes, just part of the development agreement that was agreed to, it talked about third-party rights, and one of the clauses said that no other third party, including anyone else in this subdivision, would have any right to, it's look at the development agreement and claim any kind of rights. That clause also continued and said that the city would not grant to any third party a building permit for any structure within the area designated by the note, the 80-foot restriction, except to the extent expressly permitted by the resolution, without Bull River's prior consent. That's why we have approached this as a, we're amending the resolution that exists rather than entering into additional one-off agreements, one-off building permits type things. The resolution was part of the original agreement, and we can potentially amend that as a legislative matter, rather than do something else.
So, Rob, you mentioned with Bull River, though, does that mention we need to work with the Bull River Association to be able to amend this?
No, this says we can't issue a building permit in violation of this without Bull River's consent. What we're doing is changing the resolution. There's a technical difference there that may or may not work.
Well, let's talk about this technical, what you're saying is we have an agreement in place, and if we were going to amend it, or not amend it, if we were going to do any changes to it, we had to get a third-party Bull River Association to buy in. But what we're trying to do is amend the agreement, because the city council is one that has the rights to the easement, we are amending that agreement, is that right? Am I understanding it right?
But if we're not amending the agreement, we're amending the city's resolution, the legislative policy adopted by the city defining what that 80-foot no-build easement means. The city reached a prior decision on that based on this negotiated process between Bull River, the Bowman's, and the city back in 2017.
But in the end, Rob, it was a city council decision.
In the end, it was a legislative city council decision to define what that 80-foot no-build meant.
Can you help me understand, why was it granted, I, so that, and this one, I'm a little confused about the Bowman's, the Bowman's, they came up with a 50-foot setback, but for some reason, the Bowman's were able to do a 30-foot setback, why was that negotiated? Was that negotiated with the council?
I was not there, obviously, but my thought is...
It was later approved.
Yes, it was approved, there was, there was kind of two different settlements going on of this dispute, one was between the city and Bull River regarding what rights did Bull River have in this expectation that there would be no build. And so as part of that resolution, Bull River and the city said, "All right, we're going to say it's 50 feet, no structures above ground." As part of a separate resolution between the Bowman's, the city, and Bull River, everyone said, "You can go and build your pool within, you know, without that 30-foot setback."
But they had to agree for landscaping and a bunch of other things.
And they had to provide certain other things on top of that that weren't required of anyone else.
And why can't we, why can't we do that, where, if the Bowman's entered into a development agreement, where they could come into, within 30 feet, and they had to provide landscaping, why can't we do that with the Markers? I mean, what's, what's, why can't we do what was done there, do again now?
Can I just voice in a personal opinion here? If we did that, then anytime, we would be setting a precedent saying, "Okay, we have this general agreement, we had this one carve-out because of a pre-existing issue that got resolved, which was the Bowman's." And, and so, but we've covered, we now created a broader agreement that covers everybody. If we amend the agreement, or amend the resolution, I think that's consistent with what we decided. If we don't, then we end up setting a precedence that everybody's a special case regardless, and, and it's going to put, it would, it would be a very inefficient process, because every, maybe there are four or five homes that might want to build a pool that would require some adjustments. So that would be very, in my view, inefficient, we'd have to go through this all over again. I think it's just, it makes sense to say, "We had this agreement, we came up with a way of defining no-build zones, we have a framework for changing that, changing that definition by amending the agreement." To do something else is just inconsistent in my mind with what happened. Now, back to the, somebody's opinion that matters.
So what we're doing, though, is we're moving the line from 50 feet to 42 for everyone, correct?
Correct, that is the proposal.
Okay.
I would say, my recommendation is if we're going to pursue a development agreement, that should require Bull River to also sign off on it, the same way we did this other one, and that would be a negotiated process, which maybe that is a better way of handling it, that's for the council to decide, but the reason is, part of the 2017 agreement between the three parties was a restriction on what the city would do in the future regarding building permits without Bull River's consent. And the city agreed to that, and said, "We will limit ourselves as part of that agreement."
Okay, that, this is where I'm trying to understand, the city entered an agreement, we tell Bull River we won't go more than 50 feet, and, but we're going to go amend it now, and we don't really need to have their buy-in because of amendment to the resolution?
Potentially.
Legally. But I, this is where I get into trouble, because I sat in those meetings, and I, I sat there the whole time, and I said, "I hope they resolve this before I'm on the council." So here we are. So I guess, you know, I, I support the Masters, I, you know, I think, I, I have problems with these great big easements, because I'm kind of a property right man, and I have a 30-foot easement on the back of my property for the Central UTA Water Project, which has been a pain to deal with, because they're always trying to make it wider than it really is and stuff. So I understand where the Masters are coming from, and I think it's great you want a pool. My concern is, is we've talked to a handful of people in Bull River, when I was at the meetings before, they were really pretty adamant about they didn't want, as part of the original agreement, a lot of building in that no-build zone. And I just kind of think, I, I would like the people, and you said right now, that some of the folks down there weren't even aware that this was happening. I, I, I would feel better if there was the association down there voted, and they were comfortable with 42 feet, I'm comfortable with it, but that's a major change, in my opinion, so...
I think that would certainly be a more conservative and safer approach to this, because it was such a disputed, contentious issue in the past, to have, I know that the HOA has been notified to some extent, I know there's been some discussions with the leaders of the HOA, and some have expressed that they're fine with it, however, there has been no official HOA resolution or vote taken on this matter.
Now, and I verified that with the HOA president, Brad Walton, it says, "Brad, are you, have you met as the HOA, and is this the stance of the HOA?" It was different, in 2017, the HOA president, Mike Card, came in, and he was representing the HOA here at the council, I mean, it's just, now, it is, you know, you know, I've talked to Jerry Abbott, Jerry Abbott, so I mean, there's several people in Bull River, it's not the whole HOA, but, yeah, I've talked to several, and, and, yeah, the majority appear to be amenable, that doesn't mean that the whole HOA, because they had, and I don't know, that might be the safest ways to continue this, to get an input from the majority.
I mean, if the majority like it, I think that's fine, but it'd be nice to have a vote, because some of those people down there, like the Hansons and that, probably think that this is being kind of done...
Let me, yeah, let, let me, we did, we didn't require, the last go-around, we, we've done basically the same notification that we did the last go-around.
So my concern is Mark Fisher, backyard neighbor, who did we notify? How, and maybe it wasn't required, that's maybe what I'm...
We did 500 feet with, with Bull.
Well, he's his backyard neighbor, and my understanding was, when I talked to him, he was not aware of this, and so that was a, a concern, when you have the backyard neighbor not aware of it.
You can't make people read their mail.
But I, but we could make sure they, they at least get it mailed, I, I mean, I'm just talking...
You don't call everybody every time we do a mailing, right? Did you get this? It would just be impractical. It just would.
I guess I'm just confused why Bull River has a say what a different plat can build and not build on their property.
That's a good question.
I mean, isn't there so many times where, you know, a neighborhood, oh, Reinhardt, you know, can I dictate what can be built on their property because I live next to them? I guess that's my confusion here, is how, how is this even happening?
It's a great question, the problem is it was already recorded on the plat, I mean, I, we're wondering why that was, you know, agreed to by the property owner, it appears it was, and that's why we have this easement.
And on top of that, it was formalized that Bull River had some kind of say as part of this agreement that was reached in 2017.
What, how much of a development agreement is enforceable? Because it seems like we have, I mean, that's where a problem is, right? So it feels weird to let somebody build their pool who did not go through the process the correct way, and then say no to somebody who goes through the process the correct way. But then you say it's not enforceable, like the, the building, like the pergola or whatever?
So the, the strict restriction is that the city would not issue a building permit, the city only is required, building permits are only required for certain sizes. Possibly the pergola is...
But wasn't it, wasn't it a thing initially that you couldn't build anything...
Above ground.
Above ground, which the pergola seems to be.
Yes, the, this is the problem with the no-build, is it's never clearly defined, we talk about it as no structures above ground, but then fences are permitted, expressly on the plat, they were granted a special variance for a six-foot fence, and at this point, the city has amended the code to just allow six-foot fences. So some kinds of vertical structures are permitted, the development agreement talks about the city not issuing permits for structures, but we don't issue permits for anything under 200 square feet, so someone could theoretically put up a, you know, a basketball hoop or something that's not 200 square feet.
And, and that was part of the conversation last time, I do remember that, you'd have to listen to all the...
Lighting was a big conversation.
Yeah, Rob, are you making a recommendation that we do have some type of input from Bull River because of a prior agreement?
Because we're changing the setback.
Yes, you would be changing the setback, you'd be changing the resolution that was previously agreed to.
But we ask for their input, do...
But we ask for their input, don't we?
We have notified them, and we have gotten some confirmation from the people who lead the HOA that they are fine with it. There has been no formal vote approval by the HOA.
I usually feel like if people are mad, you know about it.
Yeah.
That is usually true.
Well, hopefully, they know about it. It's the big thing, yeah.
This is a complicated issue. My recommendation is, I believe the council can act to change the resolution. My recommendation is if it does so, it does so for the entire subdivision, and it sets it not on a per-lot basis. There has been notice to the HOA. The HOA has not raised an objection to this, and there is provisions in the development agreement regarding objections, and if they think we're doing something wrong, they can let us know.
So how did, we did notify the Bull River HOA? I mean, make official notice to them?
I sent out a 500-foot radius notice from their property that didn't entail every single resident in Bull River, but just the ones that would be impacted by it.
But we didn't contact the HOA president. I mean, the Masters did, but we didn't.
That is correct.
Okay.
So the HOA president does know, though?
Yes, but when I talked to, and I believe the mayor, you talked to Brad, Mike...
He said it was his personal opinion.
Yeah, his personal, he doesn't have a problem. But I asked them specifically, "Have you met as an HOA?" Because when they came before in 2017, I thought it was, it appeared the HOA was making comments or stances on it, and that's what my, and so I asked Brad Walton, yes, he is the president of Bull River HOA, but he said he's only speaking as a resident of Bull River. There had not been any vote or discussion amongst the whole HOA.
Can I ask a quick question of the Masters? What's your timeline for building your pool? Does it have to be started tomorrow?
And I'm Marilyn Masters. You sound like someone who's built a pool before.
Sadly, no.
Okay. All right. We originally were scheduled for this week, but needed to go through this process. So we have a date of April 5th. It is, if it is approved, tonight.
April 5th that they'll start? So what would be, what would be the drawback of trying to get an official HOA position by the time we have our next meeting, since they don't need to start before then anyway? And that way, everybody can feel like everybody was notified and happy. And you seem like people who want your neighbors to like you and be happy. What would you think about that? Do you think that would put you behind, or would that be a big deal to put this off to the next meeting?
It would put us behind, but we also understand the procedure, so...
I agree with Councilwoman Bills. I think we need to officially notify the HOA.
I lean that way with what I'm hearing going on is that we have an agreement with the HOA. It appears that they were involved last time, that maybe it'd be wise to at least get some input. It appears those that are close by are favorable. We've received emails, but that's just a small handful of those in Bull River. However, those who are affected greatly are the ones we're hurting.
Is there a motion to continue and solicit feedback from the HOA?
I move that we continue this item and ask the staff to please contact the Bull River HOA to have them give input by the next city council meeting in March.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kurt, second by Scott. Any further discussion? Any other public input? Because we did sort of indicate, hold your vote till, go ahead, come up if you have the input.
Thanks for taking the time to hear from me. I'm Eric King. I'm a new resident of Highland. Just moved here from California, where I served eight years on the city council and had the opportunity to be vice mayor and mayor of our city. So I really appreciate, you know, the work that you guys do and some of the challenges that you take on as far as disagreements with neighborhoods. But one of the things I wanted to suggest before making the decision, because I think it's fine to check further into Bull River to get some support for this on a broad basis, but it doesn't seem to make sense not to approve the Masters' pool at this time because they've got all the support that they need. And effectively, when you're talking about putting neighbor against neighbor, you're giving more of Bull River a chance to talk about a broader thing where they already have very clear neighborhood support. And it makes sense to me to do that very quickly. And if you want to take time to do the more broad thing, that makes sense because I personally know that there's about a two-year backlog on the pool, you know, to get a pool in this area, and that they lose their slot, they can lose it for a very long time. So I would suggest that, you know, the council would consider approving their pool and then going back later to talk about the broad solution for the neighborhood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel, any other discussion before we vote? I would just point out that our attorney's advice is that we amend the code, amend the resolution that affects everybody, so we wouldn't be able to do a specific approval for the Masters. Okay, it looks like we're ready for any other discussion. Okay, ready to vote?
So this is for the alternate motion that we just...
Right. This is the continuance request input from the...
Until next council.
And in fact, stipulate that their input needs to be before the next council meeting, right?
That's what you said, Kurt, right?
Which, the next council meeting's the 16th, by the way. So that passes three to two.
That was exciting. It's usually a...
Yes. All right. Item eight, changing park hours of operation. Is that you, Kelly, too, or is that Todd?
Me. Okay. All right. As the council is aware, we've had a number of issues recently with vandalism in Highland Glen Park and other parks. And a staff we've met with police and our park staff to try to address the issue comprehensively. One of our recommendations is to change our park hours. Currently, our park hours are from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The proposal is to change those from that to dawn to dusk. We believe that this would be appropriate change for a couple of reasons. One is, as you know, most of our parks are located to, adjacent to residential uses, and I think that's more compatible with those uses to have the parks be done at, park use be done at dusk. You can see the chart before you. This is an estimate of what dusk would mean, and the impact of that change would be.
And that change is consistent with the county policy as well, right? County does dawn to dusk.
Yes. In looking at how we do field reservations and pavilion reservations, field reservations are from March 1st to October 31st, and they can be reserved from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And pavilion reservations are from May 1st through September 30th with the same timeframe. So we'll have a little bit of adjustment there to do, to be consistent. But we do believe that this is in the long-term best interest to help us control some of the vandalism and things that we are seeing. Police chief's here to talk about his point of view from that perspective. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to address this issue. As you are aware, we've been having a lot of vandalism in our parks, and all of that is done during the evening hours after dark, from everything that we can tell and from timeframes that we put together. This is just a recommendation to be able to, or a proposal to be able to close the parks at dusk and then reopen them at dawn. And it allows for officer, it creates consistency across all of your parks, and it makes it much easier to enforce and ask people, leave the park, remove people from the park when it's dark and those types of activities occur. So that's the request that we have. I'll entertain any questions.
Yes. How do you define dusk?
I think when the sun sets and you can't see the sun anymore, it's dusk.
So it's dusk when you can't see the sun?
That's my opinion, yeah. So, and I know that changes every day, but...
Because there's always this twilight period where it's fairly light for a while. So I just, I just wonder.
That's twilight. That's not dusk.
I think...
I don't know. What's the definition of dusk? I guess we can define a definition, but that would be the instruction that I would give my officers because it usually, it's about a half hour to 45 minutes after the sun dips below the horizon that it gets dark.
So how about dawn? Because it gets light for quite a while before that sun's up over the mountain.
If you live further to the west, we could open the parks earlier.
Earlier.
Hey Scott, the definition of dusk is it's the darker stage of twilight.
No, but in our packet, in our packet, it says the definition of dusk means 30 minutes after sunset.
Uh-oh.
I think if you need to have your headlights to drive down into the park or to leave the park, it's too dark.
Okay.
That's, I think that's a good, that's a good middle ground.
So it's somewhat subjective, but it's...
It is, but...
When you, of course, when you lock the gate, you would first drive through and make sure there aren't any cars in there?
I think it would probably depend on the availability that the officers have, which most of the time I would say yes. We weren't talking about locking gates. We were talking about park closure time, so we can discuss that at a further...
That's true. So this is just park closure.
Chief, do we currently go and lock the park gates, or they open all night?
We don't lock any gates currently.
Well, and there are no gates on the east side, so you can get in any, there's nothing to lock.
We currently don't lock any gates or unlock any gates.
So this is a proposal that we would, if there are gates in place, that we would lock the parks, or?
That would be, that's my hope, and I think that's your entire staff's hope because we spend, especially on the weekends, we spend an inordinate amount of time in Highland Glen Park chasing people out of it. And that's when the damage occurs, and not just Highland Glen, but that's when the damage occurs, that's when the vandalism occurs, that's when property, personal property and the public's property is either absconded with or damaged or just absolutely destroyed. And it's cost the city quite a bit of money. So the options, what we're asking for is to be able to lock and at least secure Highland Glen Park after hours to keep, to keep that type of activity from occurring, or at least tranquil it a little bit.
So I understand your intention here, and I certainly support it. One of the problem, I've just seen her thinking, so, and when we develop the mountain, mountain ridge parks and, you know, we may have lights in the pavilion. We may have lights on the tennis court or the pickleball courts. Are you suggesting that we don't have lights on anything the minute it's dark, everything's closed?
No, I'm not suggesting we don't have lights at all. Actually, I would prefer lights, but I don't think, again, this is me thinking personally, Highland Glen's kind of a gem and has been for the years that I've been here. I don't know that you want to put lights down there. If you want to put lights down there, I would...
Well, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying, we're going to have other parts with lights and lighted pavilions. You could have a family party there that goes beyond dusk. Are the police going to come down and say, "Turn off the lights, you gotta get out of here"?
I think those arrangements are made through reservations, and I think, Nathan, you addressed those a little bit before, or maybe we haven't gotten that far yet.
So we discussed whether or not we single out Highland Glen Park or not. And if you have a park that is a, for lack of a better example, a regional park that has lighted baseball fields and stuff like that, you're going to have different rules for that. And we would adopt different rules for that park.
So this is, in absence of anything else, that's the policy. And then when and if appropriate at other places, we would institute...
Right. For example, if we ever lit the fields for, north of Lone Peak High School, we'd obviously have something different.
Now, at this current time, I believe we have one park that does have lights on a tennis court or convertible pickleball courts there at Canterbury Circle. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, we do. And they're on a timer.
So does this mean my kids can't play laser tag at night at the park across from my house or night games anymore?
Yes.
Now, so hold it, Kim. Your question is, if the kids want to go play night games in one of our city parks, this would make it an illegal action for them to be in a park after...
I'm going to send them to your backyard, since you have a bigger yard than mine.
I think what this does is this gives us a little bit of teeth to be able to get the kids out of the park that really, that are just loitering. I think...
You're trying to do a thing to stop the damage. You're not after kids that are playing.
That's correct. And it would be on a, on a report basis only. And the officers aren't, I mean, if they're looking, if there are kids or families or groups there that are having an activity that's sponsored and they're actually doing something that's productive or, you know, there's socializing going on, the officers aren't going to really push that along unless the neighboring residents are making, are complaining about noise or smoke from a fire or something of that nature. Of course, we would call Reed if that were the case, but this just gives us the option to be able to shoo the people out of the park that shouldn't be there. And it gives us the ability to start sending a message that we're not going to tolerate the criminal activity that occurs in the parks after hours.
Is there a city curfew?
There is. Depends on your age. So the city adopted the county's curfew, which it depends on the age of the individual and the date and the day of the week, and there's a curfew there.
So kids can run around in the streets, but they can't play at the park after dusk?
We would prefer they not play in the streets either.
That seems fair.
It's preference.
Yeah.
I guess if we adopt this, I'd like to see in the publication of this, a definition of what dusk is, because we came up with two or three different ones already. So is it a half hour after the sun goes down? Is it when the sun goes down? I mean, if you make rules, I think they need to be clear that people understand them because we're already, you know, and I support this, but we're already making lots of exceptions. And so if you're already making lots of exceptions, I guess I'm confused why we're doing it. Because if the big problem's Highland Glen Park, why don't we just put a curfew or something on the Highland Glen Park? I mean, do you have a problem with Beacon Hill Park and all the other parks, or they...
Well, not the same that we do at Highland Glen, but you think about the location and how, you know, again, Highland Glen is different than most other parks because it's down...
Wooded.
In a wooded area where you can hide and you can, it's just not easily, you can't observe criminal activity very easy unless you're actually down there, so...
So chief, do we need this? Are you recommending that it's on all of our parks or just the Highland Glen park?
I would recommend it be consistent through all your parks. That way, it just makes it easier for the officers to know and remember that, not have to remember that, well, this park closes at 11, that one's at dusk, this one we're at 8:30. It just makes it easier. That's my recommendation.
Hey Nathan, what do other cities do for their parks? Is it dawn to dusk, or do they have hours?
Both. They do both.
So I'll make a motion. I'm just kidding.
Anything else for Brian?
I'll come back if there are...
Any other discussion among council? Then I think a motion would be in order. Oh, Brian would like to have some input, seeing as how there's so many people here. We'll allow that.
This is the other Brian. May I make a suggestion? I know that Kim and I are going to be breaking this rule or this law anyway because we run in the morning, like at 5:00 in the morning, we go through the park, so we would be out of line.
I meet at Mitchell Hollow, 5:30 in the morning. I meet at Mitchell Hollow, 5:30 in the morning.
But I don't think any of the police could catch us on foot, so I'm not too worried about that.
Once they did. I have a picture.
Brian must not have...
Oh, Brian wasn't, dang it, threw that one away. May I make a suggestion that it only apply to this park? The police know that it's really this park and see how that goes. And if there are issues with other parks, then expand it. But I, you know, there are clearly people who abuse the parks at times here and there. And we have it in some of the other parks, but this is really where the issue is. And I would suggest that, you know, I believe that the police officers won't have an issue because they know where this is where the vandalism is right now anyway.
Right.
And we try that for a while and not put it out to the other parks until we see that issue and see how it works from that standpoint. You can always expand it, but why put it out over areas that really aren't being abused? But that, that would be my suggestion.
Well, and the other thing, right now, the Murdoch Canal Trail goes through the Highland Glen Park, but that's going to be altered come April, I guess. So that wouldn't be a problem.
I'd like to go on the record that Brian, I think you could catch me if I was out there on the trails, so... So, Chief Williams, if you see that we, we've had a former council member make a suggestion about maybe only looking at this as Highland Glen Park, is there concerns, what would be your concern of just focusing on one park versus maybe giving a trial in this one?
So I know Brian's a long distance runner. I might be able to get him in 100 yards, but if we're looking for distance, I know he doesn't run me, so I'll just say that. It's a great question. You know, if we want to give Highland Glen a trial, a trial run, we'd be completely on board with that. So, you know, it's, it wouldn't hurt. If that's what the council wants to do, I would be okay with it.
Are we seeing issues in other parks though? I mean, we want to make sure, what your concern is addressing issues of damage in parks, are we getting damage in other parks?
So not the concentrated type of damage that we're seeing currently in Highland Glen. On occasion, we do have park branches that are broken, gates that are cut, you know, anything that can be, when people are bored, they do damage. But not like we're seeing right now. It's just, it's a continual, constant event. Our experience has been over the last, I'm going to say a year, because it started when, when school let out, when we started moving into the whole COVID-19 phase and the kids were bored and didn't have anything to do. We were seeing a little bit before that, but all of a sudden, when there was nothing for them to do, we were seeing a high concentration of kids. And when I say kids, I'm not talking about kids, local kids from Highland and Alpine. We're talking about kids from all around the county. We're contacting kids from the southern part of the county to anywhere. I don't know why Highland Glen has become the gathering spot, but it has been.
I know of a council member's unnamed daughter that maybe went down there at 2:00 a.m. and they said it was quite busy.
So I, I know of a, a police chief's unnamed daughter who's done the same thing. So we'll leave it at that.
Does Alpine have like closing times for their parks?
They do, and they're, they are, they are on time like that. I think they're the same thing as what you currently have. So if we wanted to make an exception for Highland Glen and say, you know, let's try dusk to dawn, and I know there was a mention of a gate, we are working on getting a gate put up there that we will be locking and unlocking early, early in the morning, and then after hours, we'll be locking it. But if we wanted to use Highland Glen as a, as a test pilot for this, we'd be completely happy with that.
Okay. In the original proposal here, just one question, they said where we wanted to change all of this for all the parks and cemetery. And I support Highland Glen, but do people bury their loved ones at night?
Don't know.
It says dawn to dusk except for cemetery burials.
He didn't, don't know, and, but I didn't want to run into an issue, for example, in November, and that's the only time somebody could do it. And so I figured it would be, it was better safe than sorry and included it.
So, Scott, you might be, there are sometimes people, like there's roads in the cemetery, they'll go walking there at night, even though everyone goes, well, that might be scary. They feel it's kind of safe to kind of, if they're out walking as, you know, a couple, I've seen, I've done it a couple of times tonight with my wife as we're going a night, night walk or something.
I try to stay from, away from cemeteries, so it's okay, but...
I say let's just go ahead and...
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council adopt an ordinance admitting the park and cemetery hours of operation for the Highland Glen Park only, changing it from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. to dawn to dusk.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. Ready for, any further discussion? We are ready for a vote. Next item, discuss orphan property disposal and valuation process. This will be Rob Patterson, our attorney, who's going to, I think largely try and reflect what we have decided in previous conversations.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As the mayor indicated, staff has brought to the council's consideration a proposed resolution and policy regarding the orphan parcel disposals. This policy does four things. It sets up the kind of policies, the basis for determining which properties are going to be disposed of, the price that the city will be using on a per square foot basis. It will designate what that actual price is, it will designate which specific properties will be disposed of or will be declared as surplus so they can be disposed of. And finally, it sets out the ways that the city council can revisit this, you know, kind of the policies for how the city council will periodically review and update both properties and pricing. So this is based on several conversations the council has been having for some time now. You'll note there is a few policies that describe how the properties are to be selected. And that's in the recitals to that because we wanted, as we discussed, we don't want to set up a criteria where the city says, if you satisfy, you know, the following conditions, the property will be sold. Instead, we're explaining to the public how certain properties are being chosen and that if someone else says, I think this one meets those criteria, they could bring that to the council and the council could say, you know what, you're right. We'll also designate that as surplus on top of the other ones that we already have. And so there were six criteria, you can read those in the proposed resolution regarding whether a property should be designated as surplus as an orphan parcel or not. There's also a description, again, similar, of how the city calculated the proposed per square foot price for these orphan parcels, where we looked at a few different properties from different subdivisions across the city, found their county assessed value, applied a multiplier to that to reach a certain value. And the value that was kind of settled on as a kind of tentative number was $2.74 per square foot. You'll note that the resolution indicates there'll be an Exhibit A, a list of actual properties that will be designated. We will definitely get to that point, but first we want to make sure the council was comfortable with how this was being presented in terms of policy for designating surplus, for determining the valuation, and for reviewing that. And if the council is fine with that, we'll come back and you'll then approve and actually adopt this resolution and specify properties as surplus to be disposed of if someone wants to buy it. So that's where we're on now. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've got a few. You know, and, you know, my goal's not to surplus trails, it really isn't. I just want to have the good ones we have that are maintained. I really want to emphasize that, I don't know why, I'm coming across wrong, but in the ordinance of the resolution, you have A, property should not be disposed of if it's associated with a trail. And then you go on, and so it's, does that mean if it's actually the trail? Because in F, it says if a property adjacent to a trail is disposed of. So what is the definition of associated with a trail? Is it the actual trail or is it the property around the trail? I was a little confused by that.
So this was language that was kind of proposed as part of our prior, I think we had an executive session a while ago. We can definitely make that more specific. My understanding was it was, you know, the trail corridor, that's the property that's not to be disposed of.
It's the trail and five foot on each side?
Yes. And then if there's extra, you know, say the city somehow acquired a 30-foot wide corridor, but we only needed 20 feet, you know, 10 foot and five on each side, we could say that extra 10 feet may be disposed of. So perhaps that, that should be better worded as, you know, designated as a trail corridor or something along those lines, plus five feet on either side.
Because don't we already have five feet on either side? So can't we just say, should not be disposed of if it's a paved trail?
Paved trail? The question is, do you want to address it as a planned trail as well? I know there's some corridors that have happened.
We have some dirt trails and planned trails, you know, are they different than the paved ones? They seem to be.
Yes.
Right. So I'm wondering if we need to delineate that, yeah. And I, another subjective one is we're not going to dispose of anything if it adds to the feel of an open space neighborhood. How do you define that? I mean, that's really subjective, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, we've never talked about ever about surplusing any park. I mean, the controversy has always been trails that either couldn't be developed or not well-maintained. So what affects the feel? How do you, do we need to define that better? I don't know, it seems vague.
You could. I mean, you could say, you know, if it was, it's, it's hard because when you look at a plat, you know, say you have an open space subdivision that came in, and you could say, it seems pretty clear that, you know, these areas are really key to having the open space feel, you know, that's where you have a cul-de-sac and a cul-de-sac and there's some open space between it. We think that's really important. But maybe on the side where it's just the boundary of it, they, you know, the developer stuck some extra open space there, that's not towards the feel. The, it is entirely subjective and that's, you could certainly try to find a way of defining it more. The other way is you can just leave it as that, but you point to the specific properties, you know, we've had that discussion, we've looked at various properties and say, these are the types of properties we're looking at.
Rob, I have two questions. Oh, sorry, Scott.
No, no, I'm, that's, I just had questions about those things.
Well, I'm just wondering two things. Number one, this is just a discussion item, so I'm wondering what information you need from us tonight, number one. And then number two, is there nothing anywhere, when you have an open space neighborhood and you buy into living in that open space neighborhood, is there nothing that says how that has to be remain or be maintained? Or is it, because if you move into an open space neighborhood, because it's open space and there's a lot of extra space, how much can you get rid of? Or can you just get rid of whatever you want?
Right, yeah, those are, so to the first question on kind of what feedback we're looking for, much along the lines of council member Scott's question, or Smith's questions, Scott Smith.
It's fine, I'm not offended.
We're looking mostly on the wording of this, make sure that this reflects the policy that the council wants to get. So if there's something that says too much or too little or it's not specific enough, let us know so we can revise that, so it's clearer when it comes back. To your second point, what does it, when someone buys into an open space subdivision, the most they will see really is, you know, there was a recorded plat and it will have, you know, certain areas designated as open space, you'll have the lots. You know, it may be noted this was an open space approval. Once that is approved, however, the city retains discretion on whether to keep that open space or not. Now, it may be a, as a policy matter, the council may say, you know, we allow these kinds of subdivisions that have, you know, denser areas because of, you know, our open space ordinance, that allows that in exchange for certain open space benefits. And as a policy matter, we're going to say, once that's given to the city, we don't want to change that because that was kind of the understanding. The council could also say, yeah, that was how it got approved and we allowed it back then, but we don't think the open space is necessary anymore. That is just a judgment call and a policy that the council has to decide upon. There's no law that says because this would have only been approved as an open space subdivision, if they gave X acres of open space, the council cannot reduce open space below that number.
And getting back to the subjective nature of the open space, if it affects open space feel, I think you need some subjectivity because I think the council could look at something and say, well, this little bit of land right here doesn't really add any value because of where it's at or whatever, but this piece may be similar sized because of where it's at does. And that's, I mean, you have to walk by it, you have to live in it, you have to... So I think it provides latitude for the council to just have something else be part of their consideration of, of why we're doing that, but, but the council has complete freedom and discretion there. But saying that that is a, an item to consider gives you support if you say, you know what, I think this changes the character of the neighborhood, therefore this is, we're not going to have that be eligible for sale. But again, that's, that's up to you. I think there's value in some flexibility.
So it all comes down to what the feelings are of the council at that particular time?
Correct, and...
I mean, it can't be the neighborhood comes saying, it doesn't feel good to us. I mean, so in the end, it's the council.
That could, they could come to you and say, you know what, we just, you shouldn't sell this because X, Y, Z. And then you would be listening to them if you said, okay, I agree, it changes the character of the neighborhood. Or they could come and say, you know what, this is an eyesore, it, it actually detracts from our property and it, it isn't changing the character feel. And you could base your decision on that, or you could base your decision on your personal opinion. You get elected to have opinions. And at the end of the day, you vote how you vote for whatever reason you vote on something that is legislative.
So Rob, is there a way to kind of tighten that up a little bit or...
So to the open space feel?
Yeah, the feel. I'm interested about the mayor saying, I agree with it.
Or the character of the open space or something that way.
A little bit, just tighten it a little bit. I don't know. I'd have to think about it.
It does, I mean, it is true, it's going to be subjective to the council that's currently in, of what they would classify as an open space feel.
I mean, I think that there was a good point made of, and maybe that the people who actually live in the subdivision come in and say, this is the open space we love, this is the open space we don't, it does nothing for us. And that, something the council could be like, you know, we'll listen to you, maybe that's part of our designation process.
So that's part of the feel.
But they can come in and say, one of your criterias, you know, does this add to the open space feel? And, you know, we who live there, we don't think it really does. And that's where the council could say, all right, we'll listen to you and take that into consideration in making our decision.
So the bottom line is, is if, if this gets kind of tweaked and we approve it and whatever. So what if a neighborhood comes, and I mean, we've decided as a council, a number of properties that we may like to surplus if people are interested in buying them this year, is do we meet on a yearly basis? And what if a neighborhood comes and says, gee, we really feel we don't get any benefit out of this, would you consider this one next year? Or how's that work? Or we never consider anything else? Or, I mean, we have all these tight, specific criteria about whether it's irrigated or not irrigated, or whether the city needs it for utilities or not utilities. But is there an option for a neighborhood to come in and say, like, for example, the south of the North Trail in Windsor Park, I mean, there's a lot of open area there that the people came and wanted to buy it, but they just didn't like the price. But I'm not sure it does anybody any good other than to keep a nice trail corridor.
Maybe, maybe I guess it's the same as a criteria to put something on the city council agenda. Scott, you recognize that, you talked to one of the other council individuals, if they feel that, then it comes on as an agenda item, is this an area we want to surplus? And it's really the council, we'd want to get the public input on it, you know, you know, but I think it really comes to, you know, I've always looked, we're not stopping the public from being able to talk to the council to give input if they feel there's some property there. And, and, but it, it just means that we're not having, this is the list, because it, what I noticed what was divisive is we had some trails, if it be in that Canterbury area or Wimbledon, that the council had put on the list. And when it came in, we had people in the neighborhood that said no, some said yes. It pitted the neighbors against each other, we've heard that earlier tonight. This, this kind of says, hey, if we see that as an area, we could put it, and we might not have a buyer. It might be that, like, when we see Upon Viewpoint, we see there's an area, and there might be some of the neighbors say, well, we, if we don't buy it, it's still open. You know, and there's no one else that can use it.
Sure.
So...
I was gonna say, to that point, the, the current proposed policy says that the council will review this policy overall on an annual basis or at other times that you deem appropriate, such as if someone comes in and says, will you sell me this parcel of property? And then says, council, at that point, you can add, remove property, change the value of it. I mean, obviously, any ordinance or resolution the council takes can always be undone by a later council. This is meant as a...
Same council.
Or the same council, yeah.
Right.
So this is meant as kind of a framework... So this is meant as kind of a framework for the council and for the public, kind of get on the same page. Here's generally what we're looking for, here's the current price, we're willing to work, you know, you always can come in and talk to us.
I know when we met, so there was a, there, when we talked about this, what, you know, four or five months ago, we'd kind, you'd kind of given an assignment to the mayor, myself and Brittany to maybe look over, see what would be some recommendations on some properties. And I thought the process, we kind of thought was maybe on a, every November, once we know the property taxes there, we take that pool of the properties that we just looked at the values before, look at them again and say, is this, and then, you know, and then, and they could always look at other properties and say, hey, there might be some other properties that need to be looked at being surplused or things of that nature. And then it comes back to the council, one would be the price, and then if there's some properties, maybe at that time on an annual basis. Is that kind of what we were talking about as a committee?
Uh, that's how I remember the, the, if it's totally open-ended, like, anybody can come in at any time, you're gonna, you potentially have staff running around a lot instead of consolidating the decisions into a specific timeframe. And so we talked about doing that annually. Of course, there could be other extenuating circumstances that make it a priority, but if you have that as a policy, we're just going to do it annually, at least that's a, or every other year. Or maybe, I can envision, you know, we, we do this for one year and then the next year and then there aren't that many orphans left and then we don't, we, we just, it, it never comes up again. Or we go to every other year. But I can see that changing over time is, I don't think we're going to create more orphan, more orphan parcels over time, or at least too many more.
Okay, well.
My opinion, that's.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with your opinion. And I think, I mean, this has always been a really tough thing. I mean, I've been thinking about it for ten years or so, and I still don't know the answer. I don't think there is a good answer. I mean, we have three people from Open Space here and I don't know if they know the answers either. But I guess, what, in this, if, for example, we picked some properties that we could surplus this year, which, you know, if the people around them are interested in things, what, do we just approach those folks and say, hey, there's this property we'd be willing to surplus if you're interested in it? But at the same time, how much involvement do you do of the rest of the neighborhood? Nothing? Is it just a personal thing with those people that could buy it? I mean, I, I guess, I just don't know if the whole neighborhood's involved or not, or how does it work?
So, because this would be, these are designated as not significant parcels of real estate, there's, you're setting the process by which you're disposing of them. It could be just a, hey, you come in and we don't really talk to neighbors, we don't talk to the subdivision, you come in, there'll, there'll be an agenda item where the council will approve a real estate purchase agreement between you and the property owner and that's it. Or the council could have more of a process.
But, but if we have identified some, how would those people ever know if we don't let them know? I mean, is there a process we let them know?
I would assume so, but once, once we designate that, then we contact them and say.
But will it kind of work with them individually? We're not going to let the whole neighborhood know.
We would contact them and then it would be up to the council if you wanted input from other neighbors.
So it's always an open thing.
Yeah. I, I, when you make the, when we, when you have the vote to say, these are the properties that we're considering, surplusing, available for surplus, that'll be on a council agenda. Those properties will be listed. And I presume if people are interested in commenting, that they will be there at the meeting or you hear from.
So would it be a, a public hearing or would it be a public meeting?
It'll be in a public meeting.
Yeah, normally this type of resolution's a public meeting. I mean, we could.
They wouldn't necessarily be doing a public hearing.
If you'd like to, I mean, the council directs, this could be a public hearing as part of this.
Okay.
Or it could be, you know, as to the point of having an annual, right now, the, the proposed resolution just says annually. You could say, you know, the first meeting of December, we want to have a review, you know, put this on the agenda. Whether that's formally written out or just direction to staff, so staff knows, hey, this is the thing council wants to look at at least once a year, put it on the agenda for December and give an update. It could be something that, you know, you drop in the newsletter every once in a while of, for your information, the city has designated the following parcels as orphan, or, you know, go on the city's website and see where, you know, this is something you're interested in.
I, I guess I envision, and I'm just, I think, you know, if, let's assume we've talked about Viewpoint, if there's some property by Viewpoint, if we're looking that we would be amenable to dispose, it'd probably be wise to let the residents that, you know, that could have that opportunity to, to buy it, to be aware of it.
I definitely think so. I think once we've decided that this is a surplus property, we, you know, email or whatever means of communication and say, your property has, you know, this has been designated as surplus. If you're interested, just to let you know.
Not your property.
Yep.
Our property.
Well, no, but it's like.
If you look up in the Viewpoint area, it would probably be wise for those neighbors to work with each other because if you have the one that's the third house in that says, I want to come in and buy, we would probably say, you gotta be careful because does it make us, we can't get it, you know, I mean, you want the neighbors to be communicating with each other to say, hey, how far do you want to buy in? Because if there's a certain point that we can't get access coming the other way, then that kind of stops where the buying can happen.
I, I think one of our policies is that you can't create an orphan pause, orphan, orphan pulse, parcel by, by going through this action. So if, if you've got three properties in a row and the middle guy doesn't want to sell, well, then the one on the left or the right gets to buy and nobody else does, right?
So, most of these properties, though, are not going to be big enough to be buildable, right? I mean, somebody could maybe put an extension of whatever into their house or something, but, you know.
There's generally going to only be one, two, maybe if something was hap, surrounded by many, like, you know, four or five lots that could purchase it. It'd be rare to have someone just wanting to buy a sliver of land that they can't access.
They can't really access or build on.
I mean, you know, like, like down in your subdivision, you have a, we have the old walking horse property. That would not be disposed this way because that's built, that would become a lot that would be buildable at a future date.
Actually, it's, the Jensen is buildable, but the walking horse really isn't.
But I'm saying, I think those, we'd want to make sure we get a certain value. I think this is where we're seeing, it's behind a person's home, either sitting, it might be sitting off the side of a home that really has, the value's not there for the city and it's probably not there for the open space subdivision anymore either. Like you said, that open space feel, this isn't really affecting it because it's sitting behind that person's personalized home.
Okay.
Any other input for Rob?
I've heard at least two things. One is clarifying that associated with the trail, maybe make that a.
Trail corridor.
Part of an existing or planned trail or trail corridor. And then, character, you know, that, that feeling of open space, if there's something to do there. I don't know if there is a, that's going to be inherently subjective thing. I don't know if there's a way of tightening it up, but if you have any suggestions, you know, have a look at that.
So, help me, this is just underneath two C. It says, and help me just understand how this works. The potential buyer may at their own cost and expense conduct an appraisal to challenge the valuation provided above. Their parcel shall be valued at the higher of the two values. Why would anyone want to go get an appraisal to have it higher?
Well, they could market an appraisal.
I think I meant to say, if the appraisal comes back higher, that's, I think I meant to say.
I, I, what you're saying is, but, and I think it should be that the council does have some input because one of the concerns, we all recognize that someone could go get an appraisal that might come at a value that is, once we look at it as a council, we might say, hey, we don't necessarily agree with that value maybe of that appraisal. I think it needs to have some subjective, where the council gets to take the input of the appraisal into the value.
So that, it would allow you to consider that as part of your decision, but not require you to accept it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it should be an automatic, that's the price you accept. It, it should be that that's something that the, the council has to, it takes into their evaluation.
And we just strike that, so it's just, they can do an appraisal and that'll be part of the council's consideration and be able to adjust it in response to that. I doubt there'll be many appraisals for these tiny properties, but that may happen.
Yeah, we did get.
There was some.
A wide variety, so. On the five-four-hundred trail was an example.
Right.
There was.
Yep.
A five-dollar, six-dollar spread per square foot.
Was there any desire to have a more specific review period or designation? Or just leave it as a council look at this annually, whenever?
I think an annual tells us, share with the council, that that's when they should be looking to see if there's some parcels that the city no longer needs to have at this time that are orphan parcels.
I agree with that.
Just leave it there. Any other feedback?
Okay.
Mayor, there are, one individual has raised their hand online and there were a couple of questions on YouTube. I'm not sure if you want to take public input or not, it's up to you.
What were the questions? You can read the questions.
Um, and I can, I think I might actually be able to respond to them. I just noticed them. So, is the price point determined or is the council still determining? It should be a discount and we bear the cost of maintenance at this point, was one input. And then another question online was, if there's multiple lots in a row with a strip of orphan land behind them, would it be a rule that all households have to buy it? Or could there be a scenario where if only one wanted to buy, that would be fine?
Okay, so I'll, I'll address the latter. In a case of contiguous properties, depending on the side that you have access, the city would have access to, you, you could not create an orphan parcel by selling two of them and then having a, a dead spot in between that the city had no direct access to. So it'll depend on the configuration of the property, but they do need to be contiguous. We can't create orphan parcels. And for example, in the Viewpoint case specifically on the south side, you've got a, a lane, our property there, where there was going to be a trail at some point in time, but it's, it's not possible. On the east end, the city really can't access that property because there's a pretty steep hill. So if that owner did not want to sell or not want to buy, that would preclude pretty much anybody else to the west from buying.
Buy it for your neighbor.
The neighbor could, if the one neighbor turns it down, the other neighbor has the option to buy it, right?
Uh, that would be your call. I, it could, it could. But I, I wouldn't mandate that or, or, I wouldn't mandate it or preclude it if it was me. But to answer his specific question, we just can't create parcels of land that the city owns that it has no direct access to. With respect to the valuation that we came up with, that was, that was determined by using a basket of properties that represent Highland in general and we discussed those and picked them. There's quite a few actually, and.
Maybe shown as an exhibit, I think. Is that right, Rob? There're going to be an exhibit part of this? Okay.
So you'll see that basket of properties and, and we, we used, I believe, twenty-five percent of the, the county appraised value, so significantly discounted. And if you compare what we're currently paying as a city to buy parcels of land, some of which would have no development opportunity whatsoever, and what this price is, it's, it's, it's almost unfair to the city. But on the other hand, I, I think it's a fair, personally, I think it's a fair.
No, and I think that's where you talk about fairness. So, one of the things I think it's important we put on the record, that the city did obtain an appraisal that did show that an orphan parcel would be twenty-five percent of the value of the, of the assessed county, you know, value. And that's why the council has looked at that twenty-five percent value. You, you, Mayor, you've mentioned maybe there's some property the city might buy that we, it's a little larger, it's not just a thousand square feet or five thousand, it's a little larger. And they went and sought and got an appraisal, and that appraisal's coming in higher than probably what a twenty-five percent value.
Significantly higher.
Yeah, it did.
So, the other, when we chose the, one thing we noticed when we looked at land, the smaller the parcel of land that a home is on, the more valuable that land is per square foot. And so, we did not want to prejudice any areas that had really small lots. So that's why we went and, and did a broader basket of, of Highland to come up with a price that would be fair across the board. And you'll see that when, when the exhibit comes up. So, let's go ahead and take the question from the one person online.
I'm sorry, so those are the questions online. So we do have one, one participant who's raised their hand.
Okay.
Okay. Kilgore family, I'm going to unmute you.
And I think what I, of course, I just had to point to me, about eighteen months ago, I contacted five different appraisers, none of whom were even willing to make an appraisal on the property in my name.
And, and where, where is your property or where did you live?
In Viewpoint.
That wouldn't be unusual because there, it's difficult to find precedences for selling. It's, it's not straightforward and it's just difficult. There are, there are orphan parcel sales that you can research, but it's a little bit tedious. So we, we went through the process we did and, and feel like what we came up with was fair.
And maybe to help address that is, you, when, and I, and I, it's hard because I think sometimes it was addressed with maybe some other council, but when you look at an appraisal, they're going to, usually, that appraiser's going to go on what's called the multiple listing services and look for properties that sold and what the value they sold at. And an orphan parcel is usually done between the landowner, you know, neighboring landowners.
The private party.
Yeah, so it's usually not going across the multiple listing service of the real estate. However, they are reporting it to the county. And so that's where, you know, when we now evaluate the county assessed value, is the county has a full, they have twenty-six appraisers and they have one person that's full-time that just does some of these orphan parcels. And I actually called and talked with that person about how they did that. And so that's why we're also using the county assessor, because one, they're a government-recognized entity. If there is a value that the county has on your parcel that a person does not feel is fair, there is a venue each year that they can go challenge that value at the county. And so there's, there is a process to say, hey, this is how you do it. But like the mayor was saying, what we did is we went across, there's twelve different parcels, I think, that was chosen across Highland, because when we specifically looked at Viewpoint, I think the twenty-five percent brought it up over four dollars a square foot. And so we, we looked, we said, okay, let's try to be fair, we want a price across the city. So we went and took acre lots, we went and took some of those who might be underneath a quarter of an acre. We went and took a smattering of properties and took that average of, and, and did their property tax value and did twenty-five percent of the property, the Utah County property tax value. And that's how we came up with the two seventy-four.
Yes.
And thank you, I'm going to know it was challenging then. I'm just pointing out that you're probably not going to get any appraisers in general because I can't find one.
Yes, it, they're difficult to find. You're right. So thank you. Anything else? Any other comments?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, council, anything else to give, Rob?
I don't want to belabor anything because I really appreciate all the work and different things, but I wonder if we could kind of step back and just kind of ask two or three questions. I mean, what are we trying to accomplish? I mean, have we identified, we've identified, you know, dozen properties or things that could be surplused. Are we surplusing them to raise revenue for the city? Or because we don't want to maintain those anymore? Are we doing it to solve some issues or some residents' desires? I mean, have we really defined why we're surplusing anything and why we're doing, I mean, is there a consensus that we should be surplusing property? And what's the benefit of doing it? I mean, we get a little bit of revenue, but does it solve any problems or are we creating more?
I'll give my opinion, I'm sure others have. If you look at our, when we evaluated the properties, we, first thing we did is we asked staff to come up with a list of which properties do we own that are even sellable? And there was a pretty big list. And then we asked staff, which ones of those do you think would not negatively impact the city if we sold? And then we worked on our criteria that we came up with, added that on to our filter and then we looked at all the properties that were on that list of, I think there were a couple hundred. And that's what we came up with. And the, one of the problems I can see that we have is some of the land is in areas that we don't visit very. is in areas that we don't visit very often. And so the people that are behind it or that are adjacent to it complain about the, the property itself being uncared for and they would like to care for it, right? And so we're addressing work that we have to do and adjacent owners who complain.
And the positives for the city as a whole that we generate some revenue. Is that it?
Um, there are two things. We generate revenue and then we reduce our workload for staff. Um, and I think the latter is more important because the former, it's just one, it's one-time money. When that's gone, there's no lingering effect other than did we build something that we have to maintain, right? So that, we build something that costs us to maintain.
And so what degree does it address some of the issues that we faced in the open space neighborhoods? Just some of these property, yeah?
This isn't a specific to open space, right? Open space happens to have land adjacent to it, but it's any property owner in Highland, whatever type of subdivision you...
But most of the ones we've talked about are in open space neighborhoods, are they not?
Uh, most of them are, some of them are.
I don't wanna talk about this tonight, but at some point, Nathan, I would like to have a discussion about, um, where the revenue goes for those sold properties. If it stays in that neighborhood, if it stays in open space communities, if it just goes in the general fund or what it, where it goes.
And I think that's a very important policy 'cause I think that's jumped around.
I think, I thought we already established that it was going into the proper, into the neighborhood in which the property was sold.
I, I do not remember, you know, that's why there needs to be discussion. I don't remember a specific decision being made. What, what, if it's sold in that neighborhood, the money stays in that neighborhood? Or does it stay just in the open space? Does it stay in the general fund? I think that needs to be a decision that the council formalizes and what, and, and, 'cause I think it's kinda jumped all over since I've been on the council.
Yeah, the one, I, the only decision I ever remember having any kind of affirmative vote was that it, if it's an open space property that it sold, it belongs to open space.
The whole open space.
The open space service district.
Yeah.
'Cause we're using some open space money, I think, for the Mercer Hollow. Little parklet, if I understand right.
Probably.
Yeah.
So, that was my last...
We do need to discuss that, you know, on, on how that all works. Like I said, it's not a discussion that...
Isn't that how we pay for the tennis courts over at, um...
It wasn't...
In very circle?
It doesn't, that, we, you know, they, we had sold property, but some of it, when I was voting on it, doesn't necessarily, I don't remember saying it was because you had the money. It was because there was a tennis court that was dilapidated, that was falling apart and cracking all over that needed to be paid for. Doesn't make sense. And so I, it came out of the open space money that was in an account.
And, and it was less than the total property value that was sold there, but you're right.
And, and I don't, I don't know if you, do you guys remember differently is?
No, you're correct. Um, Councilmember Bills and, um, Ossler, they're, uh, the money came from open space, from the sale of property there. There is more money in, from that neighborhood though, that was not spent. So, um...
But it doesn't necessarily have to be spent in the neighborhood.
No, there's never been, to my knowledge, any vote that has said that. So kind of the general feel we've gotten from the council in the past is in open space in general, not necessarily, um...
Always been my understanding.
The subdivision that it, it pertained to.
And I, I think that makes sense 'cause you might, let's pretend that you had a really big parcel somewhere that was sold, but that particular open space neighborhood had nothing you could spend the money on. Unless you built like a, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar playground, is that?
But the non-open space parcels that are sold, it could just go into the...
General fund.
General fund.
Correct.
Which would help develop...
I know that it's not on, we're, we're kinda talking about this as the thing, but I guess that's kinda my feels. We have the Highland Open Space Special Service District. That property that sold, that was in that special service district, stays in the special service district property. And then the stuff that's the citywide goes into the general fund. But that's probably something we need to have as a agenda item. Is that what your, uh, Councilmember Bills, is what you were talking about?
So I guess we could ask staff, when they come back with this policy, to include a recommended policy from the others. And if you have opinions, go ahead and share that with, with staff, Rob and Nathan.
I'd, I'd like to kinda go back to Scott's question. So why are we selling certain properties? I mean, there's, you know...
Do we really understand why we're doing it?
Yeah, and, you know, is it because we've had residents say, hey, I've got property that's not being maintained behind my pro, you know, behind my home. I'd like to buy that. Is that, is that why we're doing it? Is it, is it because we're poor stewards of that property and so we wanna get rid of that first, we don't maintain it? I mean, because there are some times that I think residents ask that. Why are you selling city property, you know, that's city property?
Well, I think it's for all those reasons. But I mean, when I campaigned, that was the issue with that was brought up the most. I'd knock on somebody's door and they'd be like, let me show you this property behind my house and let me tell you what I think of the city. Um, so one of the reasons is complaints of the citizens. They're not happy with our process and what's going on, maintenance that we're providing. But I think also, one of the main reasons for me is, you know, people are interested in buying the surplus property behind them and we need to have a policy guide that shows them the process in which it needs to be done and how the city manages it. And so this is basically putting that into place because it's not, you know, whether we wanna do this for revenue purpose or anything. It's basically, it is something that is going to happen that residents are interested in. So now we as a city need to get ahead of it and say, this is a process you need to go through.
And, and I agree with a hundred percent, but what we've done is we went ahead and picked the properties ourselves. But is there any process, process for those other people to come in and say, hey, is this a possibility? So I, I just find that a little vague. I just don't...
Well, but, okay, it's not, to me, if it's once a year, if I was a person that had some property that was behind my home, I would reach out to one, at least one council member and say, as you're looking at, on an annual basis, at some property, can you bring this up for a discussion? And so I think on that annual basis that, that, that should be brought up and say, here, here's one that was brought to my attention. And the council then can decide it, discuss it, has a public meeting. And if not, then we put it for surplus or if there's a reason not to. It might be we don't understand that there's utility easements underneath there or there's something that's going on. I mean, you could get with the, the, you know, with, with Todd and say, hey, this one resident's asking is, you know, we have the list. The, the city has, if you remember that one big email or, I think it was several hundred pages we had printed off, I probably still has the, has that email PDF that helps us understand some of the property and why and not, so...
And I mean, we've put those guidelines in there. Oh, well, well, let's look and see if it meets the requirements that we're asking for. And I think by picking out those, um, properties, we've kind of just gotten ahead of the curve and said, you know what? According to our guidelines, these are the surplus properties we have, are, we have, um, picked that have followed these guidelines and they meet these requirements. It's up to you as a resident whether you wanna proceed forward or not. But for me, it's the process, the guidelines and, um, just addressing some of the current concerns the residents have with a process.
And I, and I personally think you were wise to do that because the problem we had before was everybody thinks, if I ask for it, I get it. If I can get enough signatures, I can buy it, is the thing that created a bunch of division and...
And why can they do it, but I can't? I met these guidelines, they did also, so why is it different between you and me? And, you know, it's just a big miscommunication that we're hoping to, to solve.
So now it's, it's all on you, which is where it should be, really, in my view.
Good luck, Rob.
Anything else, council? If not, then, uh, Brian, you, you have a report to give on the, you didn't come here just to talk about parks and trails and pricing. You actually have a purpose tonight.
You know, the discussion you guys just had, I think I've had it fifty to a hundred times. So it's hard for me to sit back there and listen to it go over and over again, but it's really good that you guys go through it 'cause it's, it's an important decision and you need to be on the same page. So I am here because, um, you were good enough to allow me to, uh, participate on the Tempanogus Special Service District Board. And I represent that board, but I also represent the residents that live in Highland. And, uh, it's a, it's a great privilege for me to be able to do that. I've been on that board now for thirteen years. And, uh, it probably took me five years before I could understand, you know, all the crap that they talked about, no pun intended, but yes.
Just tell us, are our fees going up?
The, well, I'm gonna get to that 'cause the answer is yes.
It's going in two minutes. Something he's going to do on crap.
Notice the color of his jacket.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, I should, that was the run. So let me, I'm gonna give you a, a hundred-thousand-foot level view of what's going on because there's a lot of details that you really don't care about. As of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, we no longer do composting. So some of you may have known that we did that prior to then, um, but we don't do that. Uh, because of that decision, it has increased our operational costs by about two million dollars a year. And, uh, we are working on ways to lower that cost. And part of it is, is that it was part of our whole process, part of the whole operational piece of what we do. And so we have to change the way we actually process, uh, the wastewater. And we are in the process of doing that. Part of it is that, uh, a few years ago, six years ago, we upgraded our facility from, uh, eighteen million gallons a day processing to thirty million. And we're in the process now of going from thirty million to, um... Process, we're looking at doing pieces of changes. So we'll be, we'll be adding operational pieces and capital pieces that will change the structure and will help eliminate some of that cost as we begin this build-out. But it takes about ten years to go through acquisition of property, building, engineering, going through the EPA issues, talking to neighbors, getting lawsuits and going through all that stuff. So it's a very slow process. And by the time we get to, ten years from now, we'll have gone through most of that and, uh, we'll be ready to build it. We think that we'll have about a twenty-nine million per day gallon, um, projected growth by the year twenty-thirty. So at a capacity of thirty million right now, that doesn't give us enough, uh, breathing room. So we have to have a new plant ready and, and operational by around twenty-thirty. Next thing that, uh, so that's one piece. We're growing the facility. The, the second piece is that, uh, we're always talking about discussions of Utah Lake. And anytime we talk about Utah Lake, there's always this discussion of the wastewater treatment plants putting, um, their effluent into that lake. And then there's always people saying, well, that's the problem. The reality is, is there's a lot of lakes that don't have any treatment plants that are putting any effluent into those lakes and they have the algae blooms also. And so, uh, we are in the process of trying to figure out how to manage those kinds of things so that we can make sure that people don't come in with these emotional, emotional thoughts and think that the problem is, are these facilities and that's why we're having all these problems. They put regulations on us. One of the regulations they're talking about would actually impact all of us and would increase our cost by about a billion dollars. And would frankly, in my opinion, based upon the science that we know right now, would do nothing other than make people feel good that they forced some changes and it looks like you did something, but it's really more cosmetic than anything. So our goal is really to get, uh, facts. And if we're following the facts, then the changes are real. So if we really can change something for a billion dollars to make a huge difference, then we had to spend the billion dollars and we all should eat that cost because it's part of our responsibility. But to do it just to make us feel good that, you know, the EPA did something and somebody changed something, that's, that's not the right reason. So we are, um, doing several projects. We just, as of our last meeting in February, we awarded a study for, uh, there was a proposal by a joint group at BYU and UVU that will begin, um, evaluating some plans and some things that we have been doing. We got some money from the state of Utah. We, we proposed some of the things that we would like to do studies on to show how we can make changes to Utah Lake without going through some of the crazy things that people have been talking about. So we tested some ideas, some theories last year. These guys are going to be doing some studies and we're going to begin that process. We're trying to stay ahead of the game so that when people start screaming and hollering again, that we will have some things in place and some real science behind it and we can talk about those things.
Can I ask a little question?
Absolutely.
Interrupt you?
You bet.
So you're saying that regardless of what comes into the lake, different lakes will have algae blooms?
Correct.
What's wrong with an algae bloom?
Nothing.
That's what I thought. 'Cause I've got a good friend that's one of their, in the hierarchy, CUP, and he says he loves when the algae blooms are 'cause that's when he goes boating, 'cause nobody else is there.
That's, that is exactly why I would prefer that none of this happens because that's what happens when I go out there. People complain about it 'cause they see it on the shoreline.
So it's an aesthetic thing more than anything. It's not really a pollution.
For what we have today, if you were to go out and eat it or somehow consume it in some process, yeah, you'll, you'll get sick. Will it kill you? You would have to have an awful lot. There are companies that actually take this and put it in little capsules and sell it.
Right.
Health issues. So it's not like what we have in this lake today is going to kill anybody in the doses that a normal person swimming in the lake would consume. And, and part of this criteria is also, some of the definitions that they're using have been scare tactics for people using the lake because you can define it under different criteria and some of it sounds really scary. We have never at any time in the last, at least five years that I know of, surpassed an EPA-defined criteria for, um, for damaging people or animals or those kinds of things. Yet they've shut the lake down several times because they're using criteria that sound scary.
Right.
And so as a doctor, you, you live and breathe in the world of defining the right terminologies and things like that. And this is one of those where they've been using terminology and other kinds of things that are, that are not truly specific to what the issue is.
Because if I go boating or swimming or that, I, I, if it's a pool or chlorinated or not or whatever, I'm not there to drink the water.
That's right.
I, I, it's just okay. I just have never understood.
It, it is a little weird when you power up your boat and you look behind it and you see this bright green path of where you just were. So it, you know, but I've been water skiing in that lake for thirty years and the only thing I lost was my hair. So there are worse things that could happen. Unless you're a female, that might be worse, lose your hair, but... So we are working on some of these, so there are such things as harmful algae blooms that, that we do wanna be careful of and we are testing and we have been testing. We wanna make sure that those things are kept under control. We just haven't had any outbreaks of that at Utah Lake. So to, to close a few, to close this down and, and tell you some of the things we're still working on as well. Like a city, you guys work on your impact fees. As of February nineteenth, uh, all the cities have been, have seen an impact fee increase. So the city of Highland has received notice of that and it should've gone into effect. We are working on a, uh, fee study, which we will see some fees changing, um, just like we've done here in the city. You project out what your costs are. We think that we will see a fee increase within the next two years. But we're anticipating it based upon operational costs that are coming and that probably won't hit for about, uh, two years. And so we probably won't see any, uh, fee increase for that period of time. And to keep from getting, uh, sued by the developers and things like that, we've gone through all of these same studies that you guys have done and will continue to do, um, to make sure that we justify it. And in a fairness, it, it, it is right for us to make sure that those costs are justified. And we've been going through all of that, those same kinds of things and spending time on that. So that's what I've been doing, I've been involved in. I'm the chair of the, uh, finance committee on this board, which has been a real, uh, honor and, and a good time when you're dealing with a plant of this size. But I enjoy it. So thank you for inviting me here to present. Any questions you have?
Are our sewer fees going up?
That's, yes, but not this year. If, as an impact fee, yes, they went up as of February nineteenth, but only the impact fees, not the user fees.
It'll be after the election.
And they're not gonna go up that much. And we will be doing a lot of bonding as we build this plant. We'll, we'll spend about a hundred and eighty million dollars in, uh, expanding the plant.
Wow.
At today's rates, so... So, 10 years from now, it could be.
Brian, now, and I understand you're down there with the Tempanogas Sewer Water Districts. Do they kind of like have a?
Poop plant.
You're down at the poop plant? Do they, do you have, like, is there a board for the poop plant? And do you serve, do you serve on that board? Do you serve on the poop board?
Yes, it's a crappy business, but I do serve on that board.
Who asked him to say that and how much money did you make? What did you get from that?
My kids have called it that since the day I got on it, you know? It's the poop plant, the meeting you're going to, so.
So Brian, thank you for being our poop man.
Well, I work on the board.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, Nathan?
Yes, Mayor and counsel. So one of, one of the things that, that initiated Brian being here is in the past, we used to have councilmembers report on their committee assignments routinely throughout the year. So, we will be getting re, what's the word I want? Starting that again. So, we'll give you a heads up when it's your turn to report on the assignments that you have on the committee. So, we'll have animal shelter, TSSD, we had in.
North Point.
North Point. Our council, those kind of things.
How about the Lone Peak Safety Board? I think it'd be nice to get a little report occasionally on that.
Lone Peak, we'll have a legislative update, which I was thinking of doing next time, on the bills, the ones that we need, need to pay particular attention to that were passed between, that require some action on our part. So, just give you a heads up that that's what's coming down the pipe. And let's not make them three hours long, okay? I'm just kidding. No, we'll discuss as needed. But I think, Scott, that's a good idea. I think Lone Peak, especially as budget come, especially once we get the preliminary budget. We need to have those discussions.
Okay. Thank you.
I can make one last comment, though, just for Rob as he's working on that policy. So I was looking back over the minutes for when the tennis court was approved back in 2019. And that, that was specifically said that that was going to be done using funds collected specifically from that neighborhood. And they even, council had them go through a petition process to see if that's how the residents wanted to spend it. So just for your information, when you're looking back and trying to figure out how to do it, it seems like it's an expectation.
All right. Any other comments? We have a calendar in front of us. Next meeting is the 16th. We'll have a meeting on the 31st or 30th. And we're doing it at the end of this month because the first week of April is spring break. And so, we shifted it back a week. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.